Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 28, 2022 Mayor and Council Budget Work Session, our special annual meeting in which we take a deep dive into the budget. And here to lead us is our City Manager, Tanisha Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Ashman. We'll get started so that hopefully we don't need our sleeping bags tonight, right? So, welcome to the FY 2023 Budget Workshop. Tonight, we're going to cover the proposed 23 city budget in a little more detail than last week's presentation at the public hearing. We will begin with an overview of the general fund, including a look at projected revenue and a summary of proposed expenses. We'll then review highlights and significant changes in each department's budget. I'll cover the high-level information at the department level, and the finance team will be available to address -- department heads and the finance team will be available to address any specific questions that you have. You'll also hear from Budget Manager Nathan Bassett, who will review the five-year forecast, and Active Finance Director Janice Hartman, who's here with me at the table, who will cover a brief overview of ARPA funding. You'll also hear tonight from Deputy Manager and Slinger, who will cover the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, and the Stormwater Fund's proposed budget. After which, we'll conclude with the reminders of key dates in the process. We have taken care to address the questions you all raised during last week's public hearing, and it will be -- they will be addressed throughout the presentation, but please feel free to ask any questions that you might have as we go along.
Perfect. And since you've done your introduction, I want to actually go out of the normal order that we would go for work sessions, and I'm going to call for public comments right now. And I'm only seeing staff here present. I'm assuming nobody here wants to make public comments. I'm not seeing any hands go up. Okay, I'm just going to take a quick look. We do have a couple of members of the public, and they know the deal. They know how to do this. So, I'm just going to say, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on the Budget Work Session, if you can use the Zoom Raise Hand function right now, and we'll call on you. Going once, going twice. Not seeing any hands. Oh, I see one hand go up. Okay. Tech Team. If you could bring up Mike Sesma, that would be great. Mike, just unmute yourself, state your name, address, or neighborhood, and go right ahead.
Good evening, Council and Mayor, City Manager, and City Attorney, and audience. I just -- I am surprised that you're taking comments so early. I expected to go through -- have the presentation first, but I did notice an investment in looking at the initiatives regarding housing. I think it's high time to take a close look at that again, so I want to compliment Council for that decision and moving that forward. And certainly with new staff on board, should be able to take a good look at that.
Mike.
It's a crucial issue for the community.
Mike, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to need you to state your name and address or neighborhood.
My name is Mike Sesma. I live in the West Riding neighborhood of Gaithersburg.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Oh, as I was saying, the decision to invest in -- to undertake a study on housing and the housing plans for the city, I think, is a terrific idea. It's high time that that's done, given that we started investing in that about 16 years ago. I think it's a -- it's good to look at this periodically, and clearly, there's a great need in Montgomery County and City Gaithersburg to look at housing, especially in the category that we refer to as affordable housing. So, that was my main comment. I'll be listening to the rest of the presentation and perhaps comment again in the future. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak under public comments? Just use the Zoom Raise Hand function. And I'm not seeing any hands, so thank you all very much. We're going to turn it back over to Tanisha.
Thank you, Mayor Ashman. So, as I mentioned last week, we have -- the city has six different funds, with the general fund being our main operating fund. Most of our core service delivery is funded by the general fund, and for this reason, we will spend a great majority of our time going through the general fund. So, we'll start with a look at total revenue. I mentioned last week we're going to do a deep dive into revenue. It's probably more educational for me than it is for all of you, but it's been great fun for me getting to know the city's budget inside and out over these last two years. So, looking at total revenue, this chart is showing the history of the total general fund revenue from fiscal years 2017 through what is projected for 2023. There are a few things I want to point out here. Since we're looking at total revenue, re-appropriated funds from the reserve have been included here. You can see this in FY 17, 18, 19, and 23. The dark pink/red dotted portion of the top of the bar is the re-appropriated funds. The amounts fluctuate for different reasons. In 2017, the vast majority of the $14.7 million in reappropriation was used to create the asset replacement fund. In 2018, about 5.1 of the $12 million you see here was used to create the Housing Improvement Fund. And in 2019, about $2.1 million of additional transfer was made to the OPIB fund that year on top of the regular contributions that the city made. And then, we talked about the $604,000 that the city's proposing, or that I'm proposing that we use in re-appropriated funds for fiscal year '23, and we'll talk a little more about that later. So, if you only focus on the green, solid turquoise portion of the bar, you can see a few things. The city has experienced modest yet consistent growth since fiscal year '17 until 2020, where you see a small dip there. FY '21 looks really healthy, however, it was propped up a bit by pandemic funding such as ARPA, FEMA, and CARES Act. The bar second to the right, the one with the stripes, is what we are projecting for fiscal year '22. So, this is beyond what we budgeted. This is what we project to receive. It looks even better than last year, but also has a significant amount of one-time/nonrecurring revenue that we'll talk about in a little bit. And overall, we're projecting growth and stability, and in the midst of the economic ramifications of the pandemic, that's good news for us and the core services that we provide and that our residents and businesses expect and deserve. So, some of the influential factors for revenue. Let's spend a little time talking about one-time versus recurring revenue. You will hear me use this phrase often. It's important that we understand the variances of our one-time or nonrecurring revenue and our recurring revenue. One-time revenue can take the form of things like competitive grants, or aid, like the support we've received from the federal government for the pandemic, or excess revenue that can be attributed to one-time phenomenas, like a large construction project that creates or generates a lot of permit revenue in one year. A best fiscal practice is to match recurring resources with ongoing expenses, and we do our best to do that. We also use one-time revenues for strategic investment in projects that we would only need the funds for, or short-term projects where we know we have a short timeframe, and we can match those funds accordingly. It would be unwise for us to expect that level of revenue to continue, so instead, we continue to examine the trends very closely so that we can keep our resources aligned appropriately for our long-term fiscal sustainability. Of course, nonrecurring revenue is a good thing and gives us the ability to make capital investments and carry out short-term projects that our base budget wouldn't otherwise be able to support. And the city and the mayor and city council have a long history of being good stewards of these resources, and because of those sound decisions in the past, we are in good financial shape today despite the Great Recession and now the pandemic. We're also fortunate to have stable and growing tax base. We will discuss our major sources of revenue, property taxes and income taxes, in a few slides. And our local economy can also be an influential factor for our revenue sources, as we've seen during these last few years. Depending on conditions, different sources are impacted in different ways. The last two years have been challenging for revenues generated by activities that are deemed unsafe to gather and to go indoors and other things that were problematic during the pandemic. We're starting to see recovery in these sources of revenue, but we also know that the pandemic has been unpredictable, so we want to remain agile to be able to respond with such -- should conditions change. And then, finally, Janice will cover this slide in a few. ARPA has been a helpful influence, particularly as the city has experienced losses in revenue over the last couple of years. Mayor Ashman asked last week for more information about ARPA, and Janice will share a summary of the funding and how we have programmed it so far. But first, we're going to cover our major revenue sources in more detail and give you all a solid context for the proposed budget. All right. So, major revenue sources. If you are looking at the city's budget book, revenue is organized by category, and each category can have many line items associated with them. Tonight, we're only focusing on the sources of revenue that generate a million or more annually, and these are what I'm calling major or key revenue resources. These slides will identify the revenue category on the left of the slide and the revenue source on the right. So, first up, our largest sources of revenue, property taxes and income tax. As you can see, these two account for 66% of the city's revenue and therefore are pretty important. Councilmember Spiegel asked last week for more information about the city's property tax rate, so I've included this chart here for us to take a look at it. Property is broken into two categories, real estate and personal property. The city's real property tax is 26.2 cents per hundred of assessed value, and personal property tax rate is 53 cents per hundred of assessed value. The personal property tax rate is levied on tangible personal property, except for manufacturing equipment, manufacturing inventory, and commercial inventory. As you can see here, the real estate tax generates the vast majority of the revenue at $31.2 million. And then, toward the bottom of the triangle, you see about 1.5 million in revenue from corporate, public utilities, and general personal property taxes. So, it's much smaller share of the real estate or property tax pie. But we do levy those taxes on public utilities and personal property tax. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Spiegel?
Thank you, mostly, and I appreciate that. And I don't want us to get off on a tangent during our budget work session, because I think this is a conversation we can have later. But first of all, we apply the same 53 cent tax rate to all three categories of personal property listed on the bottom of the chart here, right?
Yes.
And I guess one of the things that I was trying to figure out is whether the public utility tax is just considered part of our regular personal property tax, or whether it's actually a parallel, separate tax on public utilities that happens to be at the same rate as our personal property tax on corporate and other personal property. But again, that's sort of a technical issue that I think we can discuss offline and doesn't necessarily affect, you know, our budget discussions and planning. And then, I was going to ask you sort of what the difference is between personal property tax and corporate personal property tax, or if those are just kind of designations for our benefit to show that how much of the personal property tax revenue is paid by corporations versus non-corporation individuals or others. And I assume that's the answer, but I'll give you an opportunity, if somebody knows, to weigh in on that as well.
Yeah, I assume that's the answer as well, Janice. Do you have anything to add?
I would say corporates, the business incorporated would be sole proprietor.
Janice.
Sorry, a corporate would be the corporate businesses, and then the personal property tax would be more on the sole proprietors and other businesses that are filing.
So, it's collected that way by the state?
Yes.
Right? And then, so it's remitted to us in that way?
Got it.
And we're able to track it in that way?
And that's actually another sort of follow-up quick question or comment that I had. So, thank you for pointing that out, Tanisha, that it's collected by the state. And personal property tax, we understand from past briefings, is sort of notoriously difficult to estimate and collect. It's self-reported by corporations and others, and it's hard to know. Sometimes, it's hard to assess the value of personal property tax, and sometimes, it's hard to know whether taxpayers are complying with those requirements. And that's not really our job as a city, because the state, I guess, is the level of government that collects that tax and then passes on the portion that belongs to us under the formula. And again, not something for us to solve tonight, but an ongoing discussion we ought to be having to make sure that we are within reason maximizing appropriate collections of the personal property tax to ensure the city gets what it's supposed to be getting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, these two charts are showing the stability and growth that I was mentioning before of our two largest revenue sources. So, as seen here, we've experienced modest and steady growth in our property taxes on the top chart, and slightly more growth in income taxes on the chart down below.
May I also, Mayor, make just a quick comment on this chart? I just want to make clear to the public, the purposes of this chart is to show revenue generated, not rates. So, as we see the line going up, it does not mean that tax rates increased.
This is true. Our tax rate has remained the same for quite a while, and one of the lowest in the state.
I'd like to chime in as well. I mean, this is a healthy chart. It shows that the value of the real estate in our city is continuing to grow at a reasonable rate, a little over 3% annually, based on my calculations. And income tax revenue is growing means that the personal income of the residents of our city is growing, which is another very healthy sign. I think that looks more like a little over 5% annual increase in income. So, it's good.
Absolutely good, yes. And especially because it accounts for 66% of the city's revenue, right? So, we obviously watch indicators like unemployment and things that affect property values very closely. I would tell you, having lived and worked in other jurisdictions, one of the benefits we enjoy here in Maryland is that three-year equalization that happens, which really allows us to know, you know, several years into the future, what we can anticipate in these larger revenue sources. And I've been other places where it's a guessing game, and, you know, you learn in the fiscal year that you're trying to budget for that you're going to lose, you know, 10 or 15% of your base. So, I appreciate the stabilized way that we approach it. I know there's a little bit of a downside to that, but from a budgeting perspective, you know, it gives us some assurance and confidence in these really large sources of revenue for us to provide services, and we can look out into the future and know how we'll be impacted. All right. So, I'm just going to rattle off here a few other key revenue sources. These are the items I mentioned where we collect about a million or more a year in these lines, and this is not nonrecurring, right? So, this counts as our recurring revenue sources. So, there are seven other key revenues, which is a small fraction. If you ever took a look at the detailed revenue in the budget book, there's a lot of information there for you to dive into. We're just going to focus on the top seven. So, under the category of charges for service, as you might expect, our parks, recreation, and culture programs and events generate about 5% of our revenue each year. The recycling collection fee is 2%. Duplication services for next year is 5%. I believe that number was around 2% before this change in the code, and so there's a significant adjustment there upwards for the city, which we're really happy about. Photo radar fines, 2% in the fines and forfeitures category. And state share taxes, the highway user revenue represents 3%, building permits, 3%, hotel motel tax, 1%, and admission and amusement tax, 2%. Emission and amusement tax was one that also grew recently sans the pandemic, right? We might recall, I wasn't here for the grand opening of Dave and Buster's, but that was going to be a big increase for that line. We've not seen that materialize yet, but we absolutely expect things to rebound as we continue to recover and learn to live with the pandemic.
Can I ask a quick question about the photo radar fines?
Yes.
Again, without getting too much into the weeds. We've understood that the purpose of the photo radar program, of course, is not to generate revenue, but to change behavior and make our community safer, and we've certainly had a number of briefings over the years on that. And then, I guess, the idea was that we were to expect a drop-off in that revenue over time, as opposed to kind of expecting it to be a regular recurring level of revenue. I'm not -- I don't want to put anybody on the spot, because that's a very specific question that I didn't give anybody a heads-up about, but if anybody's able to kind of just briefly talk to that, or how we anticipate that revenue based on, you know, previous year's data, if we're expecting behavior to change and then revenue to drop off?
Thank you for that question. We actually have seen behavior change and therefore revenue to drop off. And our assumptions for the forecast, I think we're including a decline in that revenue when we look out in the five years, and certainly, we've seen -- we've experienced that year over year. So, I'm not sure if anyone else wants to add anything.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nate Bassett, the city's budget manager. So, for next year, we've projected a 4.1% decline from this year's revenue. We did see a slight increase after people started venturing out again after the pandemic had started, just because people had forgotten where the location of these cameras. But generally, we anticipate a 2% decline year over year in that particular revenue source. So, it's not something -- we do anticipate behaviors changing, although with the city's growth, you know, there are new people moving in all the time, and that can, again, bump up the revenue, so.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nate. So, on this slide, I'm showing three different revenue sources. So, the tax duplication is the top chart. The middle chart is state highway user revenue, and the bottom chart are building permits, which we'll actually look at a little more closely. So, you can see we're still celebrating our collective regional success with tax duplication. On the top chart, you see there's a level amount of funding, and then you see that line start to increase. So, for years, we've received about $1.2 million, and this amount is increasing to three and a half or so for next year's budget. And there's a three-year phased-in increase, so we'll continue to see increases, and then it will level off. We're pretty excited about that, and thanks to all the hard work from everybody who fought for decades to get that formula codified. Essentially, what this is, is the county providing some reimbursement to the city for services that we provide that they otherwise would be required to provide. And we're actually already starting to see, as we mentioned last week, some increase in that fund here as projected in FY '22 due to a separate action that the county council took to fund some of the increase for this year. So, very excited about that. The middle chart illustrates the state highway user revenue fund. This is shared revenue from the state's gasoline and motor vehicle revenue account that comes to local governments. The distribution requirement of these funds is set to sunset in FY '24, which would leave municipal distributions at the lowest level since the Great Recession. Currently, House Bill 1187 would increase the municipality's share through FY '27. That bill is now in hearings in the Senate, and of course, the city and MML are strong supporters of that bill. So, we may see some increase there.
Tanisha, do we expect the gas tax holiday to impact our highway revenue from the state?
I believe municipalities are being held harmless. I'm not sure if anyone knows the answer. Yes?
The bill did not.
Dennis, come on up.
To my knowledge, the bill didn't address how they were going to pay for it, so I would assume we would be held harmless, and they would find funding in other areas to make the 30-day holiday work.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I think we can follow up on that, too.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, this bottom chart is building permits, which we'll take a closer look at on the next slide. We typically bring in about $1.5 million, but this revenue can fluctuate based on circumstances. So, this the permit chart again, but it's on a different scale so that we can see the fluctuations more clearly. As you know, building permits are required for construction projects in the city, and a fee is collected for the permit, which allows our inspectors to ensure the safety of these projects as prescribed by the building code. Our base level of funding is about $1.5 million, as I mentioned, but this number can go up when we have large projects in the city. We're currently projecting $4 million for this current fiscal year, as you can see on the chart, and this is mostly due to the Washingtonian North Senior Housing Project. Sometimes, these shifts are difficult to predict because the development schedules change. So, we typically don't account for this or project the funding in a future year unless we're pretty sure that it's going to go through the planning and permitting process in that particular year. So, that leaves us a bit susceptible to these shifts, which is why we typically budget about $1.5 million for this line. And anything over and above that, outside of what we are pretty confident we'll collect in a fiscal year, we treat as excess or one-time revenue. So, for fiscal year '23, we're budgeting about $2 million, because we've added $500,000 to that 1.5, because we're pretty confident that we'll have some additional projects come through the pipeline. But these things are subject to change, and we don't necessarily control the development schedule for some of these projects. So, we're very careful here not to overshoot and count more revenue than we're expecting.
So, the likelihood is it'll either be -- you'll either be in alignment with the projections or there'll be good news?
Yes. That's our hope.
Okay. I mean, we'll talk more about this later, but I, you know, in terms of projections, the city has typically been very conservative about projections, which leaves a lot of elbow room for good news as the year goes on. And there's nothing wrong with that, but I think, anyway, I'll just leave it at that, and we'll talk more about it as we look at some other slides.
Sure. And when we get there, we can talk more about, you know, I think, their timelines. When we're first meeting with developers and going through the project details, and they may say, you know, we expect the entitlement process to start on this date and finish on this date. Most of the time, they're overly ambitious there, so we tend to discount that a bit. And then, sometimes, we're surprised and something moves forward faster than we anticipated. I believe that was the case with the Washingtonian project, if I'm not mistaken, that there were lots of shifts that have occurred over the pandemic about when that would start. I don't think we anticipated that permit to be pulled in this fiscal year, and here it is. So, if we had counted that when we thought we were going to get it, we would have lost. And so, here, it counts as excess. And I still think those large one-time projects should be looked at closely and leaned more toward the nonrecurring revenue side, because we know that we're going to run out of developable for new projects. Redevelopment will be on the horizon. It's a little more difficult to predict, and the city may find itself participating more as a financial partner in redevelopment projects as an incentive, which could impact the building permit revenue. So, I think the $1.5 million, as you can see, is pretty consistent over time, that that's a good number for us to shoot for. And then, we closely examine if there are any large projects in the pipeline and our confidence level about when those permits might be pulled. All right. So, this fun slide is showing some of our impacted -- pandemic-impacted revenues. All right, so this fun slide is showing uh, some of our impacted, pandemic impacted revenues. Turned too many pages. Uh, so visually, I want you to notice the V that you see in the chart in each line that begins at fiscal year twenty-twenty and finishes upward in FY twenty-three. The top larger dashed line is revenue we collect from parks, rec and culture programs and events. The solid line uh, in the middle is the admissions and amusement tax collections and the dotted line is hotel motel tax. As I mentioned before, we are anticipating recovery in these revenue sources as we move into learning to live safely with the pandemic. But this V, this very deep V that you're seeing there is, is very indicative of, of how um, those revenues were impacted when things were closed down um, and people were learning how to, to do these activities safely. Overall, though, I will say that um, you know, the growth we're experiencing in our major and key revenue sources has created the fiscal stability that we need to fund our core services and to fund a few service enhancements and restoration of some services that we've had to uh, either curtail or eliminate. We are also able to support a few short-term indoor special projects with some of the projected non-recurring revenues that we're expecting. We'll get into more of that as we talk through the department summaries. Um, and we'll also talk a little bit about how we've benefited from ARPA and Janice will present that. But before I turn it over to Janice, I just want to ask if there are any more questions about the revenue projections.
Not seeing any, go right ahead.
Hi, so in twenty-twenty-one, the city was awarded eleven point five million dollars through the American Rescue Plan Recovery Act. The funds were awarded to support responses to, responses to and aid in recovery from the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. The city received the first tranche of funds, five point seven five million in May twenty-twenty-one. We expect to receive the second and final tranche of money of five point seven five million this May. The final rule allows for the funds to be used in four different categories. The first is public health and economic impacts, which, this allows recipients to use funds for programs, services and capital expenditures that support eligible COVID-nineteen public health and economic responses. The second is premium pay for eligible workers. These funds may be used for workers performing essential work during the COVID-nineteen public health emergency by providing the premium paid, providing premium paid eligible workers. The third category is replacing lost public sector revenue. The final rule offers a standard allowance for revenue loss of ten million dollars. This allows recipients to select between a standard amount of revenue loss or a calculation for their full revenue loss. The standard allowance amount may be used for government services with streamlined reporting requirements. The final category is water, sewer and broadband infra, infrastructure. Funds can be used for investments in broadband infrastructure and eligible water and sewer infrastructure, including stormwater management projects. So in FY twenty-one, the city recognized five point six million dollars of revenue utilizing the lost recovery category. In FY twenty-two, we expect to recognize another three point nine million of revenue related to lost revenue. This includes two point seven million for the FY twenty-two calculation and a catch-up of one point two million for the revised FY twenty-one calculation, which you, which utilizes the new formula provided in the final rule, which was released in January twenty-twenty-two. If the city selects to use the ten million dollars standard allowance, this will allow five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of revenue to be recognized in FY twenty-three for lost revenue.
Can I just ask a quick question about the slide? Um, in the footnote to the slide, is it supposed to say the final rule created a ten million dollar revenue loss maximum?
No, it's a minimum.
It's a minimum. Because if we actually, so we're gonna, we're budgeting five hundred and fifteen in twenty-three. If we actually experience more than that, then we can claim more than that.
Oh, we can, okay, got it.
Yeah. So with a standard allowance of revenue loss of ten million, the remaining ARPA funds available would be one point five million. We plan to utilize three hundred forty-six thousand dollars of these funds in FY twenty-three for new positions that were on hold due to the pandemic. As noted, these positions include the finance system support manager, sediment control inspector, co-administrator, officer and inclusion coordinator. And we also plan to use another eighty thousand dollars in FY twenty-three to extend nonprofit emergency support. This will leave roughly one million dollars left for future programming, which may be used as we can claim additional lost revenue or other economic and public health expenses. Funds will need to be obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four and expended by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six to meet the ARPA requirements.
Okay, sorry to give some questions, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you guys for your patience. Um, I, I imagine there is some uh, planning going on among staff to sort of game out how to maximize the different sources of federal support that have been coming during these last couple of years so that we're not, you know, using ARPA funds for something that we might otherwise get reimbursed by FEMA from or, you know, by some formula in the infrastructure law that passed or something like that. In other words, trying to sort of set ourselves up to maximize the, the benefit of multiple different federal programs so that we're not using this money from ARPA in a way that we, you know, aren't maximizing, in other words.
No, I, I, that's a great question. I think um, I, I will avoid my soapbox of, of the riot act. I've been reading anybody who would listen that I do believe Gaithersburg um, should have received more, that we are, we are very grateful for what we've received. Uh, but there are lots of communities that are struggling with how to spend their monies because they've received so much. And as you can see from these slides, uh, we've been able to absorb most of it just through revenue loss. And there are lots of communities, including the county, um, who was able to maximize and, and fill their gaps, their holes from revenue loss and still have a significant amount of money to figure out how to program. Um, so in our case, we don't actually have that problem, if you will, um, with one point five remaining and using some of that to restore positions. Um, we can also continue to fund those positions for a couple of years. As Janice said, we have until tw- end of twenty-four to obligate the funds and twenty-six to spend them, which relieves some stress on the general fund as, as we hopefully recover, right, and have those revenue sources recover. Outside of that, you know, we were looking at categories that we know are aligned with, with this council's priorities of, of um, those communities that have been really impacted by the pandemic and looking at things like funding the FEC um, differently versus how we've already decided to fund it. This fund, these funds can help support that. Um, and so all of that sort of lies outside of some of these other larger programs that are coming down from the federal government. So we are certainly keeping close watch on those. Um, Tom, Dennis and I have met with all of the congressional staffers and um, trying to learn the ins and outs of the new congressionally-directed spending. Um, we used to call that something different, but that's a, it's a bad word now. So we call it congressionally-directed spending. So we're trying to make sure um, that we position the city to be in line for some of those, um, those dollars. Obviously, the infrastructure bill is a huge one as well. And um, Mayor Ashman and, and some staff spent time um, with Trone's, with Trone and his office and learning more about how to get ourselves positioned for those dollars. So that's, that will continue, um, and I think that is a priority for the city. Uh, we, we are a little bit behind the eight ball in that, you know, that a lot of these projects, they like to be shovel-ready. And in some cases, we, we just, you know, we, we weren't prepared for that, but we have a year to get prepared and that is our goal, uh, to be in better position to ask for and leverage these other dollars. So I think in, in a lot of other communities, there are ways to kind of stack these ARPA dollars with everything else. In our case, we may not have a whole lot of ARPA left over, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to take a swing for these other funding sources.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Janice. All right, so we're going to shift our focus to expenses now and we'll spend the rest of our time together here. So this slide I showed last week, um, it is the all funds proposed budget. So we've been talking a lot about the general fund. We'll continue to do that, but this one shows all of our funds. And this slide is also um, showing sort of all expenses plus transfers. And last week, uh, Councilmember Harris asked, you know, whether we were double counting anything because the numbers just didn't add up. So just want to point out that on this slide, taken altogether, including transfers, the FY twenty-three all funds budget is ninety-eight point six million. But here, we stripped out the transfers, um, except OPEB. So OPEB, we counted here because that, those monies, once they're transferred, are no longer accessible to the city. Um, so this eighty-six point nine million of an all funds budget without transfers is the actual spending, actual monies out the door uh, for the city. So just wanted to give you um, a sense of that and, and hopefully address Councilmember Harris's question.
Still don't buy it. And the reason I don't buy it, are you really, I mean, that fourteen million for capital improvements, you're saying that that's, we're actually going to spend fourteen million on capital improvements this year?
Yes, that's the plan.
That's a lot compared to what we've seen in previous years.
I think, that's true, but you may be thinking more about the transfer to the capital fund and not necessarily what you're spending out of the capital fund.
Well, uh, so in terms of spending on the capital fund, things like building the new city hall slash annex slash police station was a fifteen-plus-million-dollar project. That's actual spending that wasn't, you know, separate from the transfers that we uh, we initiated in order to provide funding for that. So out of that fourteen million, are we really spending that on stuff this year?
We are, so a little over eleven million of that is our surface improvement program. Right, and then, am I not saying that right? Go ahead, Nate, if I said it wrong.
No, the, the surface improvement program is about two point one million. That's annually recurring.
Oh, that was the combination.
Yeah, that, that was the combination over five years. Um, so it's two point one million in FY twenty-three. Um, that number does increase by a percentage every year. I don't remember exactly how much PW has increased it by. But uh, you know, there, there are a number of major projects that are currently wrapping up, um, but there's still a lot of ongoing spending. Um, we have Edison Park Drive. Um, that's a large product that potentially could see spending in FY twenty-three, um, once that gets moving. Um, I, I can provide some more input on.
Well, you will hear more detail on the CIP later with Dennis as well.
That's fine.
But I don't think that amount is abnormal for us in the, in the annual spending for the capital improvement program.
Historically, we've spent about ten million. Um, this would be an increase, but with inflation and what we've been seeing in pricing, um, I don't think this is unreasonable.
Have all of those major expenses that now appear in the capital improvement, have they in the past been accounted for in, in other buckets? So I seem to recall some years ago, moving certain things from general fund to capital improvement. Uh, and I can't think of a specific example, but is that maybe one of the potential causes for why it seems like it's a larger number now? I don't know, just throwing that out there.
Well, I, I think what you're referring to is like every year we, we make these transfers to accrue for the, the uh, spending we're going to do in a year like this. Am I, is that not right?
It's, it's possible. I think what we can, we, we can definitely do is provide some historic spending numbers for you for the CIP so you can get some context around the history. Um, as Nate said, and I, I think I'm fairly in agreement with him that, you know, we're about ten, eleven million of spending out of the CIP. Now, your CIP isn't, isn't a new fund. Some of the other ones are, are relatively new. And so you may be thinking about when we move things to the asset replacement fund. Um, we're actually doing more of, of moving things out of this, the CIP that belong more in the operating budget. So you're, you're going to be seeing more of that as we go forward, um, because it just makes sense. If it's certain kinds of maintenance, for example, it, it's not really a capital improvement, um, according to our definition of that. So we're actually cleaning things up and moving more out of the CIP. But I do think, you know, prices have gone up on almost everything. So anything you're trying to build these days, um, you know, we're, we're seeing some, some really hefty uh, price increases there. You do have large projects wrapping up, as Nate said, and so you're still seeing some tail end of that spending. And we've been really conservative uh, for the past couple of years on new projects uh, because we really want, we want to get the study completed, understand what our long-term needs are before we overcommit to a, a ton of large new projects. So it's actually a pretty restrained CIP. But I think we'll hear more about some of the detailed CIP later with Dennis and then we can get you some follow-up information on the historical spending.
So just not to belabor the point, but maybe just for a little bit. So we, we're taking in seventy-some million dollars in total revenue. That's all the money that's coming into us. Uh, and we're saying we're spending eighty-six, so our total fund balance is dropping by twelve, thirteen million dollars. Is that what we're seeing?
In some cases, we're, we use fund balance, right? And that's part of the reappropriation. If you look at the all-fund summary in the budget book, you can look across each fund and see how much projected of the reserve that we're using. But you have to remember that we are a pay-as-you-go community. So over time, right, we're building um, a balance in order to spend it on projects when it's time to spend. So there will be years where we spend more than we bring in because our, you know, we, we've set it up that way, we've saved up for it.
I understand, and we certainly saw that with, like I said, with the building across the street. That was a, that one pulled the balance down and that's exactly what it's there for. I, I'm just, oh, again, I don't want to, I don't want to beat this one to death. Um, I'll go look at the rest of the, the report and see if I see it somewhere.
So two comments quickly. We did change the method of how we're accounting for things with regard to grants and other project revenues. Those are going directly into the CIP fund now. They're not going into the general fund, so the general fund transfer is going to appear lower because we'll, rather than reimbursing the CIP fund, you know, having the CIP fund reimbursed by depositing those in the general fund, they'll actually be transferred into CIP fund. The other comment is that the largest projects, um, the annual surface improvement program um, is the second largest behind Pleasant View Park. We plan for two point two million in spending on that park next year. Um, and then there is a bunch of grant revenue to cover those expenses for that particular park. Um, and then the Old Town Parking Garage, there's about one point two million for that project, or one point three million. Um, so there are a number of major projects happening next year, but a lot of it is just ongoing recurring um, with relation to uh, you know, regular PW projects and engineering.
And, and, and just a lot of realignment. So these are good questions because I think you are seeing a bit of a different approach um, now that you, you've got yourself a new city manager, she's changing things a bit. So it, it didn't, it, for me, it, it was an extra step we didn't need to take. If we were going to get a bond bill for a park project, um, in the past, we would have ceded that money in the general fund and then it shows up in the transfer to the CIP. And then if you look at the CIP, it shows up as a, a transfer within the CIP, which is kind of hard for the public to track, right? So we're trying to streamline that a bit and show where, um, how the capital project is being funded. Um, so if it's coming from the CIP fund or if it's coming from some outside resource or grant, uh, we want to be able to show that more clearly and so we're, we're moving in that direction as well.
Do you have any further questions?
I think he does.
No, no, you guys go.
Okay.
All right, so quickly on the summary, um, as I, as I mentioned before, we've got seventy-two point four million dollar general fund budget, which is up three point two percent from last year. We are proposing to use six hundred and four thousand in reappropriation to cover planned one-time capital projects and contingency funding. And just as I know, contingency funding is five hundred thousand, so the vast majority of that is, is contingency funding. We're not using any fund balance to fund operating expenses and there is no tax increase proposed. The budget is aligned with the city's priorities and community output and it invests in our people, including staff and the community. We are also pleased to be able to restore programs and services that have been impacted by the pandemic. And the budget isn't yet in its final form. There will be additional adjustments between now and adoption in mid-May and we will certainly keep track and report those to you as we go along. Okay. So since we're going to review each department's budget, I won't spend a lot of time on this slide. I just want to point out a few notes. On the left is last week's chart that illustrates personnel services. Our people make up the vast majority of our expenses, as is the case with most similarly situated organizations. Personnel services are increasing almost six and a half percent or about two point seven million, which covers the addition of new positions, the general wage increases, minimum wage increases and increases to the city's health insurance of five point eight percent. The operating portion of the budget includes things like supplies, services, professional development, et cetera. It's increasing two point eight percent or about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Here, we're seeing. Here, we're seeing the impact of restoring services and programs, and in many cases, that restoration comes with corresponding revenue. So that's a, that's a great thing. Um, we also are seeing some increase in fuel costs, as as we've discussed, and I think we're all experiencing. And other special projects and one-time projects that have been funded through enhancement requests are included here as well. Overall, the transfers are are down. Um, that includes the reduction to the OPEB transfer that we made in response to the funding policy and the study that was conducted. And the overall decrease also includes an increase in transfer from the CIP. I just want to spend a quick second there. Transfer to the CIP year over year is increased. However, last year's transfer to the CIP was artificially, well, not really artificially, it was deflated by a large influx of cash from the Stormwater Fund. So you might remember last year, the Stormwater Fund repaid the general fund and the CIP, or the capital fund, uh, for initial capital outlays to set the Stormwater Fund up. So it got healthy enough to be able to repay those funds. That decreased this, the need for transfer for the CIP. So the general fund didn't need to move as much. Um, so you're seeing an increase in the CIP transfer this year for that reason, but also because uh we did fund a few new projects, though. Um, they're really small projects, which you'll hear about later. All right, so I think we're jumping into department summaries, which is the fun part of the night. Um, as you have questions for each department, the department head will come to the mic uh, and do their best to rescue me from whatever I've said incorrectly, okay? They're all prepared for that. Uh, so we'll start with the Office of the City Manager. Um, each slide is going to be structured this way, where we do the employee head count up top uh in the left. Um, we also do the overall total budget. There are arrows that show whether that's going up or down. If there's no arrow, then it stays the same. Um, there's a a small org chart in the right top of the slide, and then highlights and significant budget changes are down below. So the biggest uh significant budget change for the Office of the City Manager was also an enhancement request. So you guys remember Nate talked to you about our process change, where we sort of set up a base budget, and then anything beyond that, beyond contractual increases and things like that, departments needed to submit an enhancement request, most of which were funded, um, and most of which were funded fully, some were funded partially, based on available uh resources. So in the Office of the City Manager, we did approve the capital needs study. This is something we've been talking about for a few years. Um, and certainly we discussed it last year with my first budget presentation to you all, that we really need to take a hard look at the CIP. What are our comprehensive needs? Um, the city has conducted several facility assessments, um, to take a look at our facility needs. Uh, we have a good handle on our infrastructure needs from, you know, looking at our streets and things like that. And we just want to get that uh better accounted for, understand what the financial costs are, and then set up a funding strategy for the CIP that's better aligned with that process. So we we will need a little bit of outside help to undertake that, and so we funded a study here to do that. Um, another significant budget change is, you notice, the Office of the City Manager also includes housing and community development. The CDBG funding was reduced. Um, we received some additional funds because of the pandemic. They were called CDBG CV funds. Um, somehow I got good at all those letters. I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do when they're useless, right? So CDBG CV was additional funds that entitlement communities like the City of Gaithersburg received as a result of the pandemic. Uh, we are not receiving those funds going forward, so you see a decrease in funding there. Anything else you want to add, Nate?
Um, I think that the CDBG funding, they'll probably cover more in depth at some point, um, when they're presenting the plan. So those numbers do tend to change between the proposed and the adopted. Um, so just keep that in mind.
Next up is Office of the City Attorney. Um, here you've got a number of employees going down and total budget going down. The the vast majority of this impact here is because we don't have a city election um next year. Um, so you you tend to see their budget go up and down based on whether the city has an election. We did fund a new legal intern position, um, to try and help Lynn and her team with some of their administrative responsibilities, and also hopefully give a student and potentially new Gaithersburg employee uh some, some opportunity to learn and grow. Um, outside legal services for boards and commissions was reduced. This is a funding, a a piece of funding that's used to deal with con, when we have conflicts with boards and commissions and we need outside attorneys. Based on um historic experience there, we were able to reduce that funding a little bit. And as I mentioned, most of the the other reductions are election year specific and have been removed. There is something that we're investing in for the election, which is the new ballot tracking software, which we hope will streamline things a bit more for Lynn and her team and our volunteers, who spent hours and hours and hours. We hope to reduce some of those hours uh with some new software, and so we'll be investing in that in this fiscal year to be prepared for the next election. Any questions there? Next up is the Department of Human Resources. Um, employee count staying the same, though we did upgrade our, what we call reclass a position. Um, so there's a vacancy, and we like to advertise that at a higher level uh in hopes of attracting some good talent to help, help the HR team out. Uh, the budget increased nine percent, and that's really to cover some additional stan, state mandated um requirements for police personnel. There's some additional uh mental health and physical health, physicals that need to be undertaken um as a result of last year's state legislation. Uh, we also increased funding for incu, for recruitment needs. Uh, we've seen a, an increase in the need to recruit, like every other organization. And uh, we're going to continue the citywide employee engagement initiative, which will come with some additional training and workshops for our supervisors throughout the organization. Any questions about the HR budget? Department of Community and Public Relations. So as you might expect, your PIO provided me with a very nice budget highlights form to cover here. Uh, so just quickly, I want to point out that there is a slight error on their employee count. It's listed here as going down by point four four FTE, or what we call full-time equivalent. Um, it should actually be up point two instead of down point four. So I know it's just a major error there, but we want to make sure that we we pointed that out. We will make that correction uh in the budget book. Uh, the increase there is due to adding back some part-time hours as we increase or return to pre-pandemic levels at the Wells Robertson House for, for residents.
It's actually more mundane than that. It's a software issue. Um, and I'll just leave it at that, um, but I I will fix it in the budget book.
It's going to be fixed. I was telling them why there's an increase. I think that's actually more what they care about.
Yes, sorry. My apologies.
It's fine. It's not, it's not mundane, right? So, um, so we're, we're really excited to be able uh to restore the full service capacity at Wells Robertson House, and we need um to restore those part-time hours in order to be able to serve the residents there. Um, so a couple of things here. Uh, the budget is increasing. There were several enhancement requests approved uh for, for this department uh throughout the different divisions. So I'll talk a little bit about them all. Um, a big one was the website refresh, so I think every five years, right?
Twenty eighteen is when the current site launched.
Okay, not five years, but.
Almost.
Almost. Um, we do a refresh of the website. It's a major undertaking uh and and has a cost associated with it, but I think it's important and we should proceed. Um, also funded here is the biennial resident survey. So last year, you might recall, we talked a little bit about this. We changed the timeline for the survey. Normally, it would have happened last year. We're moving it to this year so that it's not in an election year, which will help staff, um, who are really busy, um, helping to educate the community, uh, engage the community around the election. So we've, we've separated that out. Um, and so we'll be doing a new resident survey. We are also using a different company so that we can have uh results that are hopefully more useful to us than just general satisfaction. So we'll be looking at and asking the community to not just tell us whether they're satisfied and how well they're satisfied or not. Uh, we'll be asking them to prioritize those services based on that so that we can understand if we've been over-invested in some area or under-invested in some area based on importance and satisfaction. So looking forward to that. Also restoring the state of the city events, uh, so there's some funding associated there. Um, we approved a partial cost of living increase for our grant funding programs. And that's both for the educational, um, educational and, I always.
Community advisory.
Community, thank you, community advisory uh grant. So those uh grants had not been increased with the cost of living adjustment for quite a while. So we, we wanted to uh make those adjustments so that hopefully they can just continue the same level of care that they're providing, seeing how costs are going up for both people and things these days. Um, also new for next year will be a capacity training for our smaller nonprofits. So we're really working, focused on helping um those nonprofits who might not have the infrastructure already, the administrative infrastructure, if you will, to be in line for not just our city grants, but even other funding opportunities. And we know that if we can help those nonprofits grow and get connected to the resources they need, they can serve more people in our community. Um, so this is, this is a bit of a pilot to see how this works out, and if we're able to help some of those smaller nonprofits build their capacity. Uh, we're extending the nonprofit emergency appropriation, which you heard earlier from Janice. We're using ARPA dollars uh to do that. And all, as I mentioned, part-time wages are being increased as we return to Wells pre-COVID numbers. Are there any questions for, for this department? The other thing you'll see if you actually look through the, the budget book, um, there's a lot of movement. It looks like increases, large increases in some uh divisions and not others. That is the consolidation of the funding for FEC. So there's a lot of movement of money, not necessarily new money that's, that's happening there to fund the FEC. It's in line with what we presented over the summer.
For the benefit of the public, the FEC is the Financial Empowerment Center that we are embarking on. I'm very excited about that. Um, can I ask a question about the, just sort of from a budgeting perspective, about the extension of the nonprofit emergency appropriation? I'm generally very supportive of doing that, but from a, from a budget perspective, as opposed to a sort of, you know, policy and program perspective, um, how do we, how do staff sort of see that playing out? Is it a, a, another one-time approach? Uh, because we still feel like there are um heightened needs a- at this time uh and will be, you know, in the next, in the next fiscal year uh because of um all the community needs? Or is it something that, you know, we can expect there will be maybe some kind of longer-term proposal to uh increase, you know, the grant appropriations separate from emergencies, so to speak?
So I, I, I appreciate that question. I think we, we certainly are still in an emergency status. Uh, I'd like to be able to evaluate the continuation of that on a more permanent basis once we've sort of put some distance between us and the, the really devastating impacts that the pandemic has had on our most vulnerable in our community. Uh, we know we're hearing from our nonprofit partners that people are still struggling. Um, I was just with the team last week, learning more about, um, you know, the, the eviction cliff that's kind of headed our way, some of the experiences we're seeing surrounding communities who've had their moratorium already um expire. So we, we know that there is still certainly an emergency state that we're operating in. So I'm comfortable with continuing an emergency appropriation. It's possible we'll be talking about another emergency appropriation next year. Um, and given that we have ARPA dollars to support that, I think that makes sense. Um, I think, again, once we put some more distance and we can evaluate, what are those long-term needs? And and how are we meeting those needs, and whether we need to make some longer-term adjustments? I think we can wait on that discussion, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Britta, did you want to add anything? Okay. Any more questions about this department?
Not seeing any.
Okay. So next up is the Finance and Administration Department. Um, they are getting a new position, as we talked about, the new finance system support manager position. Uh, this position's going to help us maximize the use of our existing software. We have, we have good tools, um, and we can use them even more efficiently to help our staff be more efficient. Um, to do so, though, we need to, to break out um the, the responsibility of managing that system um from our current comptroller and acting director, Janice, who's very happy uh to move those responsibilities on. But we're seeing, we're doing a little more of this um gradually throughout the city as we um invest in, and you know, these aren't just um tiny software packages. They're almost um sort of nucleus or operating systems, if you will, for those, those departments. So we've done some investment in public works, for example. We want to make sure that we're using the tool efficiently. We have somebody in-house that's on top of training and can keep everyone else up to speed and up to date um, new uh functions of the system so that we can always stay on top of that and um other things that we'll have this, this position doing. So it's, was proposed and approved prior to the pandemic. It was put on hold. Um, and I, I left it on hold during last year's budget as well. Um, as you noted, we are uh funding this position and a few others using ARPA dollars, as that's an eligible expense and doesn't require these general fund dollars to do that. And we're also going to be upping our support. So this ERP software is the system that this position will support. Uh, we want to make sure that we are investing in um some good training and software support for the system itself and for the staff. So those are the major significant budget changes for finance.
Question, do you anticipate with the implementation of the ERP? And as, as the functionality is ingrained, um, that there are benefits, cost benefits elsewhere, things that may get a relief because the solution's in place?
Possibly. I think it's too soon to, to do that estimate because, um, Lisa and I have had this conversation, but it was kind of in passing. So just want to point out that we're not buying a new system. We already own this system, and I believe we've owned it for twenty years, right? So we've owned it for quite some time. It is still a top-of-the-line ERP system for local governments, but I have not found that we've, we're using it to the best of its capabilities. So I absolutely believe that we will gain efficiencies in, in our processes, um, the time that it takes to, to do things, and generally from payroll to accounts payable, getting checks out the door, you know, automating some of these things that, um, even though we have a system that's capable of doing it, we may not have configured it that way back in ninety-nine, and we've not really gone back to address some of the major reconfiguration that needs to done, be done. So we're not buying a new system. It may feel like a new system. And so we want to make sure that as it feels like a new system, we treat the implementation or the upgrade um in that way so that we have all the care and feeding we need uh to make sure that it, it's smooth. Uh, because I've been on the bad side of a bad ERP implementation. Uh, the staff knows this. I have a little bit of PTSD around that. It was, it was terrible for about eighteen months. And um I don't want to go through that again. In order not, in order to avoid those pitfalls, you need to make sure you're investing on the front end.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yep, it does. Thanks.
Tanisha, is the procurement division, um, is it a downgrade? Or are you splitting responsibilities between, it looks like you're, you're getting rid of the division chief, adding a short-term specialist and a long-term manager?
So the division chief position changed last year.
Okay.
And we have a procurement manager, um, who still runs the division and is going to be hiring a specialist. be hiring a specialist. But is, she's not a division chief. We changed it.
Okay. Is it title or is it downgrade?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
I think, and I've not been here that long, so I have a little bit of what, you know, history from staff and also just my short experience here. Advertising and recruiting it as that division chief, I think was misleading for the applicants that we would get and what they were expecting to do once they arrived at the city. So I think we right-sized the position and it was actually the right thing to do because we ended up with a really fantastic candidate who's joined the city, is doing a great job and will have the opportunity to fulfill a support position for herself soon, the specialist.
This may be the wrong time to ask this question, but where does the increase in healthcare costs for employees show up? It's, it's not finance, it's not HR.
Non-departmental.
It's a non-departmental?
It shows in every department, actually.
Okay. So it's sort of spread out among the cost of every FTE or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Department of Information Technology. This department is also getting a new position, new GIS specialist position. As I talked about, some of the city's recent investment in technology for our departments to support their work, most of that, if not all of those new programs have come with a GIS capacity that have really, I think, enhanced our ability to deliver service. And, and that, and so the work of the GIS unit has, has increased substantially as well. And so this position will be helpful in spreading out some of that responsibility. I think it also will create a little bit of opportunity for succession planning in that division as we have, that leader is a, is a bit of a rock star, probably does the work of two people. And when she leaves, or if she leaves, you know, we, we might have some trouble there. So we want to make sure we're building in some succession planning opportunities, but really maximizing the use of our technology investments throughout the city by making sure we have adequate GIS people on staff as well. And then remote work infrastructure. So this looks like an increase to the budget, is an increase to the operating budget. These funds used to be in the CIP. And because they're not technically meet the terms of our CIP, what constitutes a capital project, we moved the dollars over to the operating budget. So this is also to be sure that as we stand up our permanent telework policy, that we also have appropriate tools to provide to employees to be able to work efficiently from home. Questions here?
Are we going to get an update on what that policy is as it rolls out?
Yes. It's not been finalized yet because we've still been able to function under the COVID telework policy, but the committee's working on it. Okay. Department of Parks, Recreation and Culture. A lot of their increase here, you see their, we've got staffing increase and we have a total budget change here. A lot of that is driven by the restoration of programs. So we've been either running much smaller capacity programs, or in some cases, we've not been running programs at all based on the time of year or where we were with, with variants of the pandemic and things like that. So there's been a significant impact on this department's operations. As I mentioned, as we restore these programs, a vast majority of them have a fee associated and so we expect the revenue to increase as well. We approved several enhancement projects and I feel like I'm not going to do G-Park, good, G-Works, sorry, G-Works Good Service here. So Carolyn, I want to ask you to come up and talk a little bit about that. But while she's coming, we have a new turf field, as you know, at Robertson Park. We need to expand management of rentals there, so we needed to add some funding there. We upgraded the Inclusion Coordinator position. So this is a part-time position that helps families connect with our programs and, and find ways to do so when they need accommodation. We increased service at the youth centers so that their service hours, I think it's summer hours, right, are, are even at both youth centers so that there's service coming out of both of those places. And then I want Carolyn to talk a little bit about G-Works. It's just, some of you may know about it. It's a really great program and it's saving the city money and doing all sorts of great things. So.
Yes. It's a relatively new program. We piloted this past summer and it's really a workforce development program where we brought in a, a group of folks who maybe were not quite ready for the workforce, mostly older teens, high school students. And we had, I think we had about 20 last year who went through the program. They had to take several classes leading up to the, to being in the program, which took place in the summer. And then we had some of them continue through the school year with programs. We had several who also took paid positions. They were able to get to that point to take paid positions. So this year, the G-Works program, well, this upcoming fiscal year, we are expecting approximately $50,000 savings by using these interns in our workforce development program as opposed to using staff, part-time staff. So it's a significant savings to the city as well as providing this opportunity for youth, older youth to get ready for the workforce.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Do we compensate interns or provide stipend?
They're given a stipend for travel and food.
But no time remuneration?
Pardon me?
No time remuneration, paid?
No. That's part of the savings. Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Shall I stay up here just in case there are other questions?
Well, I don't know. You may want to say that. You won't prompt questions. Who knows? Carolyn made it really, the enhancement request process easy because a couple of her enhancement requests actually saved the city money, which not everybody can pull that trick off. So. But the, the G-Works program, I think, is, is great. A really good opportunity for the youth and we've seen that impact. So I'm, I'm really excited about the expansion of it. We'll also be celebrating the Arts Barn 20th anniversary next year. And so we funded that. And we have a new elementary school coming online. And so we needed to fund and staff the Amazing Afternoons program. So there, there's funding associated there. The Gaithersburg History Research Project, where we're looking at the diverse history, or the history of our diverse communities in Gaithersburg. It's a five-year project. And so this is funding to support the second year of that project. And more transaction fees. What that means is our software system, I guess it's not really software, it's a POS, we get charged for money that we spend there, right? So every transaction has a fee associated with it. We are expecting a lot more transactions next year and therefore we expect the transaction fees to go up. So that's, that's what that bullet means. Any questions about this department?
Not seen?
Oh, go ahead, Rob.
Are there any strategies to compensate interns for their time? I mean, one of the big access barriers to those kinds of programs is when there is no compensation, they're not accessible to those that may not have the, the means within their families to support those kind of activities. And so I don't know if it would be a, a means-based grant or just across the board, some kind of compensation for their time to participate in. I, I'm kind of uncomfortable in, Carolyn, I, I recognize the, the value of approaching cost savings, but I'm not sure this is the kind of cost savings we should be looking for.
Well, I think some of the barriers are typically transportation, right? And I think we try to cover that through the stipends. Maybe you can talk a little more about those stipends.
And I would have to do a little research to get the actual amount that we, that is given, but it is, it is to cover transportation and food for participants.
I, I'm thinking more along the lines of those that need to make a, a choice between an after-school job and, and participation in a program because their family means don't permit it. So I just ask you to, to take a look at that to see if there is any budgetary strategies or, you know, looking at other programs around the county and in the area, what they're doing.
And I, I think also keep in mind that we do employ several hundred part-time staff and we're always on the lookout for part-time staff. So it's not like, you know, we're doing this instead of hiring part-time staff. It is, it does help offset that, but, but we are.
Like, is it, is it, is it reasonable to assume that people who are gaining work experience through G-Works are then more employable in part-time jobs by the city? Like, it could be a pathway, right?
Right. This, through the city and elsewhere. We, we've had several folks go through the program and actually get employment elsewhere as well. So, and it's, there may be situations where there are folks who are not quite ready to go into that workforce without having something like this to help prepare them for it.
Yeah. Maybe I'm just having bad flashbacks as a poor intern. But I won't belabor the point, just will ask you to look into it.
Yes.
Had a question for Britta. Sorry. Back. I thought in her department, we had a, a person that was serving the, the role of a, a Grants Coordinator or a Grant Seeker position. It was somewhere on staff and I thought it was either.
Yeah. There's not a dedicated position for that. Within community services, we had identified when we did some job reorganizations that the person that was the project manager, which is now the vacant position after Tawana Lofton had left, part of their responsibility would be to help us look for grants. That will be focused on the effort of the Financial Empowerment Center coming up. That person, we're, we're hiring that position. We actually have a conditional offer up for someone. And a significant part of that will be seeking grants to support the Financial Empowerment Center.
What about seeking other grants, not necessarily tied to the FEC, but for any given thing where there's other people's money out there that we could apply for and spend?
I don't know if there's function with that through the, the new position or the new person you hired as well, which was Louise Kaufman's former.
Who's here?
He's here.
Put him on the spot. No, we don't, we don't have a dedicated Grant Seeker position currently on staff.
So when I first came on, I think it was for the first few years, we had a .5 and I thought they were in economic development. And then I heard that there were some, short-circuited conversation. I, I think it would benefit taking a look at a position, whether it's an FTE or a .5 or something, where they're dedicated to looking for and obtaining other people's money for us to spend. Because it seems that it's out there so long as there is an infrastructure in place and sophistication to be able to seek it out. And I, again, I thought in, you know, 16, 17, we had a .5. I want to say it was in economic development. And then it kind of just lost, was lost in the conversation until I heard somebody in Britta's organization was also.
Yeah. It, it was not, within community services, we, we constantly keep our eye out, but it was not the primary function of any one person. Dennis said he wants to contribute. Since we're all casting the vote.
I'll try to contribute. It's really scary when I'm the person who has the history because I've only been here eight years. I believe it originally started out in Park and Rec and Culture in terms of having a Grants person. And sponsorships was the primary focus too, that did, that was funded through part-time staff. And then it went to economic development as part-time staff. And then it was kind of reevaluated on whether it was working and was determined it wasn't working in those particular sources and that we would be looking for grants in different ways.
So you provided edification, not crazy.
Nope.
I mean, here's, so, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to finish the thought. So we, we've got G-Park out there, which is a nonprofit that can access funding. And we do have a strategy for fundraising, at least when it was briefed on G-Park. It might behoove us to try to rethink or to reemphasize that type of activity, specifically, especially because we now have an, an entity associated with the city that part of its mission is that fundraising aspect. Just throwing that idea out there too.
We do have a sponsorship coordinator in, within Parks and Rec. I know, because I work closely with her on book festival stuff, I don't know what she's doing specifically on grants. Carolyn, you might be able to speak to that better than I, but, but she's definitely working hard on getting sponsorships for our events.
Yes. And we are, because we love to do programs and events and things like that, we are constantly on, on the lookout for grant funding. We take advantage as often as we can with even things like POS funding, the program Open Space Funding and things like that. So we're, we're always on the lookout for grants, whether they're small grants or large grants. We did this past year look for a grant to perform a park equity study, which we're actually going to take on in-house because we did not get that grant. But we're, we're always on the lookout for grants. And we do have, as Judd said, we do have our sponsorship coordinator who helps us with grant writing. And then we typically look to Louise's position to help us with the.
David's position.
David's position. To help us with just formalizing all of that. But I did get a text from Maura Dinwiddie, who has a little more information on the G-Works, just to, to wrap that up. So the stipend is $30 a day. It's paid monthly and the interns' hours are typically four to eight hours per day, depending on the assignment. The workforce class and internship experience does make them indeed more employable. And as part of that internship, they also have a job coach that checks in and supports them throughout. And that's our high school program coordinator. So it's, 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 she says it's inspired by the Liberty's Promise Workforce Development and Internship Program. And the primary difference is that we schedule our interns specifically with our camps, hopefully expand that also to our, our other paid programs and opportunities.
I've said my piece about utilization and compensation of interns, but that's very impressive, real time.
Yes. She said she tried to raise her hand, but it didn't, I guess.
Yes, we do have some of the division managers on.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll keep looking at the Zoom.
Thank you.
I just, after we went to the public, I just stopped looking at the Zoom because I anticipated we were going to be having, you know, participation that way. But I'll, I'll keep an eye on it.
You know, and Rob, back to, I think you're talking about different grants and outside funding than maybe I'm thinking about. But one of the budding conversations that Tom and Dennis and I have been having is, is the value in, in an outside consultant advocacy lobbyist firm that does well with bringing federal dollars back to the city. As I mentioned, we need to, we need to improve our capacity and position the city better to receive those dollars. And, you know, a city our size would typically have some help, you know, down the street, mining and also writing those applications and getting them in. It's a little bit different maybe than the grant writing that maybe you were talking about. But that is something that we were looking at. It's a little more doable from a contractual standpoint versus an FTE, just as a quick refresher, right? We're, we're, we funded this budget with $604,000 from the reserve to make, to make the numbers work. So adding a position might be difficult, but adding a service that we can evaluate and adjust might be.
Yeah. I, I was asking about historicals on it. And certainly a strategy when you're starting from scratch, you don't necessarily bring the body in. You try to figure out if there's a need. So using a consultant may be a perfect strategy and we get traction, then you make a decision as to whether you inhale those services. But, you know, if you're following like the nonprofit model, for example, they have grant writers of the wazoo on staff because that is their lifeline. And it's a strategy that could have parallels with the city, particularly if we've got a parallel nonprofit corporation that we've established with part of that role. So something I'd to consider on the horizon.
Okay. Thank you. Any more on PRC?
We're good. Thank you. What'd you say, Britta?
I said it took four of us to cover that one.
Everybody gets a turn.
One remote, two.
All right. Next up is the Department of Planning and Code Administration. This department is also up in, in positions. We have approved both a new code administration officer, which will come with a corresponding increase to the fee, the rental inspection fee. We held off on this. So this position had been approved and funded before I arrived to the city as, along with the fee increase. That was all put on hold because of the pandemic and not wanting to increase fees during the height of some of the really troubling economic times there. We, we've been able to times there. We, we've been able to watch that evolve a bit and we don't think that adding the fee at this time for the rental fee will, will be a negative impact. And so we are able to add the position as well. I don't know how many units have come online and how many we anticipate, but we have far exceeded the capacity of the existing staff to stay on top of those inspections, which are really important from a public safety and health perspective. We are also adding a part-time settlement, sediment control inspector to this department. Again, another position that existed was held for the pandemic. We are now reinstating it using the ARPA dollars. We're also adding standby hours or after, for after-hours calls for our building inspectors. So we have a fire or something that occurs after hours. We always need them on the scene to inspect and determine whether things are safe to enter. We have staff that help relocate families. All, all kinds of things happen at night. We want to make sure that we are compensating that staff for the time they're doing there. So that would be in addition. Those are the main significant budget changes there. Anything to add? Any questions?
No, just as a quick comment, I'm very happy to see the funding for the comprehensive zone, zoning review. I think.
I did skip right on over that.
That's probably one of the most impactful projects.
It's actually the most expensive thing on the list here, but yes.
But it's, you know, I think money well spent. Looking at the zoning map in the city, it's time for a review and really should, it could have a very big impact on how we operate going forward. So I'm glad to see that coming forward.
Thank you for pointing that out. I am, I'm too very excited about this. I think it lines up well. As we are finalizing our strategic plan refresh as well, that we step back and look at the tools we have available to us to effectuate these things that we want to happen. We know that the zoning code has been a, a barrier for us in many ways and this is a, a great opportunity to, to revise it. A zoning code change is a major undertaking. And so for me, it was a no-brainer to fund some, an outside consultant to help us with that so that we can stay on track and, and get it done because it is, it is a significant amount of work.
Tanisha, would a review of the, like the Old Town Master Plan, for example, would that be something that would fall under the scope of that? Or would that be something that we'd need to discuss as a separate item?
I don't think we'd be folding in the individual master plans, but they have to be looked at. Greg's coming. Hi, Greg.
I just want a grant to come.
You are correct. The master plan would not be part of the zoning rewrite. It would have to be a different, a different action, as, as we did with Lake Forest Mall Master Plan recently.
Okay, thank you.
They come up periodically though. After a certain number of years, they'll.
Yeah, I think we're, work up around 17 years on Old Town, something like that. So I know it came up often last year on, while we were campaigning. So just in hearing the, the zoning, I, I wasn't sure if that was something that we were already putting into, into the mix or if it's something that perhaps we should begin talking about if, if there is an appetite for such.
Well, so I, I think the, the one that comes up periodically is like the full land use. It's not like specific study areas. That's what we're legally right in.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's six-year rolling cycle.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Department of.
I'm not seeing any hands raised on.
Who's raising your hand?
It was Rob Robinson. Oh. Did he lower his hand?
I have just not seen that. Okay. Rob Robinson, are you, if, I don't see your hand raised. Okay, now I do. All right. Tech team, if you could bring, bring up Rob Robinson, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to jump in based upon Councilmember McNulty's. Part of the game plan related to the zoning rewrite is, as the council is aware, we're beginning the housing element. We want to get that done. So whatever policies, you know, can be reflected in the zoning ordinance, as, as City Manager Bryle mentioned, we want to complete, you know, the, the council's efforts on a, the new strategic plan. We then want to get the zoning ordinance done because as we had mentioned, our next thing after housing element is to concurrently do the land use element and the transportation element. And to Councilmember McNulty's question, as part of the overall land use element, we are going to be looking at those remaining aspects of the Old Town Master Plan. Even though that master plan is a number of years old, much of it has been completed. So we don't necessarily think at this point, we need a complete rewrite, but coupled with a revised, you know, potential CBD zone and those facets of the Old Town Master Plan that really need a reload, that is the game plan from long-range planning's perspective. So it's complete housing element, council completes revised strategic plan, we complete the zoning ordinance. So then we can go into land use and transportation and hopefully come out of land use with a comprehensive rezoning. So everybody will know as, as we do the engagement, what, what the zones mean when we do a comprehensive rezoning. So I, I just wanted to jump in just to lay out the timeline for everyone.
Thanks very much, Rob.
Question. Where are we in the six, in the six-year cycle?
Rob, are you still there?
Am I still on? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're still on. Go ahead.
Um, since a couple of years ago, the state changed it. It's now 10-year cycle. So we are still working on what we call the 2018 update. So what was included in this was historic preservation, the Lake Forest Master Plan, housing, and then transportation and land use are all part of this update cycle.
Does that answer your question, question, Tanisha? Okay. Thank you, Rob.
Uh huh.
Go ahead, Tanisha.
All right. On to the Department of Police. The, I think we'll have to adjust that at some point. So the employee count, no, it stays the same. We're just making, we're changing a position. I'm sorry. So the employee count stays the same here. The budget is increasing and the majority of that increase is related to salary scale adjustments. So there was a study that was undertaken to review the salary levels for all of the different ranks in the department. It's actually still in progress, but we've made some adjustments already that you see reflected in the proposed budget. There may be others that occur between now and the adopted budget to address some of the higher level ranks. Also, I thought I took that out. The reporting, oh no, I took out the other thing. The new reporting, tracking and analysis software will help the department stay on top of, of crime trends and have a more efficient way for reporting and tracking to occur. And then the, the big one at the top is we have, we will be upgrading and creating an Assistant Chief Captain position. This is to help with some of the administrative sort of managerial burdens in the department as, as well as create succession planning opportunities in the department as well. So that, that sums up Department of Police. Any questions there?
Is that Assistant Chief position because something Chief Sroka has said to you? Because I don't want him to leave.
I agree. So we can strategize separately about how to do that. You know, at some point, police chiefs retire. It happens. Sad, but it happens. And, and as that happens, we want to make sure that our internal, we have internal candidates that are prepared for the role. Doesn't necessarily mean we end up with an internal, but I think it makes the most sense. We all, I think, respect and admire the work that, that Chief Sroka has done and would like that work to continue. I think a really good shot at that continuing is to have, have internal candidates that are, that are ready to go. I also think that the chief likely has too much on his plate and needs to spread some of that out, which helps other people in leadership roles grow and learn new positions and new opportunities in the department. So it's a win-win, I think, all around. It won't be if he decides to retire. He may just stay with us forever, Rob. I don't know. You can see, see what you and I can come up with. But I wanted to make sure that we were focused on succession planning for some of our key positions. We still have a long way to go. As far as citywide is concerned, there are certainly other key positions we want to make sure that we're building a bench for where we can. And at the same time, we, we are also prepared to, to know that we may need to recruit from outside and, and that's why you saw some additional recruitment dollars in the HR budget as well, so that we're, we're prepared. It's, it's not the best time to be recruiting anybody these days, but we're hoping the environment shifts for us and we're in better position.
One thing to note as well is that the administrative burden with all of the new regulations around policing and internal affairs and things like that have increased the burden for the administrative staff and made it so that this type of position is necessary. You know, because at this point, we don't have the admin staff on the police to continue putting out the level of work that they're already doing and adding these new regulations.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, just one more question. So the county recently revised in the next year's budget, the pay scales for their officers. I, I don't know.
Rob, think fourth.
I don't know if, sorry. I don't know if Tacoma Park and, and Rockville have as well. Maybe it's more of a comment and not a question to answer today is, I'm hoping we're taking into account those adjustments to their pay scales to ensure that we're remaining competitive.
I think we consulted with them as a part of that analysis that we undertook. That analysis is still relatively fresh. Like, it was within the last couple of months, if not sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Department of Public Works, lots of divisions here, but we're just going to focus on some of the, the, the main significant budgetary changes. One, we're adding an intern to Tony Shop. Again, same with, with the Office of the City Attorney, allowing an opportunity for a student to learn and grow. And as, as my old boss once referred to me, get a value added, a value added in exchange because they do work for us. These are paid positions though, Rob, so hopefully that helps. So we're adding an intern position. We are also expanding the city's compo service. So we have two sites now, one at Public Works, one at KC. We'll be adding a site to City Hall. That was an enhancement request. We added monies for maintenance for the new park coming online, Pleasant View Park. So every time we build new park amenities, we need to make sure that we provide the resources to maintain them adequately. We also consolidated fleet expenses. So if you were looking through the budget book, you see a huge shift in some of the departments. That was moving money that was spread out across the city in, in both fleet maintenance and fuel and consolidating it all into one division. It really is going to decrease the administrative burden for accounting for all of those funds. And we also talked about fuel costs in general increasing. So you'll see that change. We are providing for an increase in our contract cleaning costs. So we've had, I think we've enjoyed probably a very advantageous rate for several years. We are going out for an RFP and looking at some of our neighbors anticipating an increase there. We're also adding obviously 16th South Summit to that cleaning cost as well. There are some deferred maintenance that we've put off during the pandemic that we'll be catching up on. We're enhancing the service that we're providing to our right-of-ways. So additional seeding, overseeding, mulching and weeding to enhance their appearance, trimming, other things, just trying to add a, a level of care there. So we'll be using more contract work for basic mowing and we'll be using our in-house staff for some of those more intricate beautifying appearance services there to enhance the look. And we are bringing on some new homes for, so we're adding some recycling services. Obviously there's a corresponding fee that will increase there as well, but there's costs for the carts that need to be provided. I think this is Crown.
Crown and Chasing.
Crown and Chase, that's right. Those are the major ones for, for Public Works. If you are bored and need to get excited, you should review all of the changes in the, in the budget book for the Public Works Department and all of the departments. Any questions there?
Not seeing any.
Next two will be really quick. Non-departmental. So last year, we talked a little bit about this. This used to be a part of the Finance Department, which just made the Finance Department's budget look incredibly large for their very small but mighty staff. So we've, we've broken that out and, and show it separately. Non-departmental covers citywide things that aren't necessarily attributed to individual departments. Here, the main change is that there's a net decrease in the transfers, which we've already discussed. So the, the vast majority of the funding in this non-department department is the transfers. Okay? And then just a quick overview again. Across the city, we've got general wage increases reflected in all the department budgets. Health insurance increases reflected there. I did want to point out that we are increasing the tuition reimbursement amount. It's not been changed in a couple of decades, I think. And so we, we've made an adjustment there. And we are adding translation services to the city. I believe we used to have this service. We wanted to bring it back so that all departments can have access to translation. Hopefully 24 hours is our goal so that even our 24-hour departments can use it as well. All right. That's it for my part, I think. No, you do have to hear me one more time. Sorry. So Nate's going to cover the five-year forecast. I'll cover the housing improvement fund really quickly and then we turn it over to Dennis for CIP and Stormwater.
So the five-year forecast, the city's five-year plan is meant to give a general idea of the city's financial direction and provide an assessment of the medium-term outlook. Between proposal and adoption in FY22, we saw a turnaround from a net negative to a net positive fund balance at the end of the five-year timeline. And in the intervening period, have seen an even more optimistic view come into focus. Staff developed general principles for the anticipated behavior of revenue and expenses with minor revisions each year to determine what the longer-term outlook is. The more certainty we have about the behavior of a revenue or expense, the better able we are to predict how that revenue or expense will look in the future. FY21 and FY22 revenues are coming in considerably higher than anticipated, or FY21 came in higher. FY22 is coming in considerably higher than anticipated, primarily due to ARPA funding, with nine and a half million between those two years, stronger local property and income tax revenues, and permitting fees in FY22 is already previously discussed. Though most individual revenues for FY21 and FY22 are exceeding their budgets or have exceeded their budgets. In FY21, the city added 11.2 million to fund balance. And for FY22, we have projected a 10.6 million increase in the FY23 proposed budget book so far, which would put the city's fund balance over $70 million. I would like to note that the estimate for FY22 will still change between now and adoption. There are some expenses that we still need to program into that estimate. When looking at the five-year plan in the FY23 proposed budget book, you'll notice that we show continued use of fund balance between FY23 and FY27, but that the fund balance never goes below the fund policy balance threshold, which is 25% of the three-year average of expenses. Given our current assumptions and the city's financial position, the city would maintain approximately $50 million in balance even as the general fund budget grows to $84 million per year. For comparison, between the FY22 outlook to the FY23 outlook, the major changes are as follows. For revenues, real property tax and income tax have been adjusted so that the annual growth rate in collections is 3%. Those assumptions. Previously, we only anticipated 2% growth in these revenues. Given this change in the upswing in revenues in FY22 impacting projections from FY23 to the out-years, the increase in this revenue category is about $17.2 million over the five-year period from last year's forecast or $3 million in just FY26, the final year of last year's five-year plan. Clear? Yeah, hopefully. The change to the income tax, stronger growth in FY21 and FY22, and the change to the county tax duplication services revenue, the county grants and share taxes category rose by $21.4 million over that five-year period from FY23 to FY27 versus the FY22 to FY26 period. So again, it's a little confusing and compare it, five-year periods, but in one book versus the other. So you're going to see the out-year versus the in-year and that's kind of what's fueling part of that growth. But for FY26, it's a $4.2 million increase versus what we were showing last year. So just kind of that one year snapshot of what the out-year looks like. In addition, we are seeing some revenues trend higher as they recover from the pandemic, particularly, particularly the. In addition, we are seeing some revenues trend higher as they recover from the pandemic, particularly the admissions and amusement tax and charges for services. We will continue to see movement in these pandemic-affected categories and try to adjust for the out years. On the expense side, the increases are mostly in line with expectations, with the exception of transfers. In this year's budget, the capital transfer was smoothed over the five-year period with 6.8 million less in capital funding planned based on this year's outlook. And that is also impacted by that movement of grant and outside funding sources directly to the CIP rather than being deposited in the general fund. This will change based on the long-term capital planning and funding study set to take place in FY23 with this budget approval. For asset replacement, we did not include an additional transfer in FY23 to increase the reserves in this fund. In prior year, we included an additional 800,000 and then projected that out. The net of that is about 3.8 million over a five-year period. So potentially, if we do increase that next year, that'll change the outlook for that particular transfer. Lastly, the changes in OPEB funding have reduced the city's planned transfer over a five-year period by about 10.3 million. So this year's five-year plan has substantial modifications that have brought the expectations more into line with what we anticipate seeing over this five-year period. However, there are numerous large expenditures that we anticipate coming on the horizon that will change this outlook and have not yet been factored in. As always, this is an exercise using general parameters rather than specific assumptions and should be viewed through that lens.
Just want to note for for the next presentation on this next year, whenever we whenever we have it, that's kind of dense.
Yes, sorry.
We may need a couple of slides just just so we can.
Yes.
Sort of digest all of this. But I think I I believe I'm following you.
Okay.
Well, just to go back a slide and and do a quick high-level summary too. Typically, that that dotted line that you see here over the the previous five-year forecast periods, it's at some point always shows below zero.
Yes.
It always shows that we will deplete the reserve. So a lot of these adjustments, I think, have had a positive impact on on the forecast. And then, of course, to just remind particularly the public that as a pay-as-you-go community, we it's not that we don't ever expect to use fund balance. We do expect to see the number go down because we've saved money for projects and then at some point we spend that money. I think the the key here is that the five-year forecast is no longer reflecting that we're going to deplete the fund, the reserve on operations, which was a which was a dangerous place to be, right? We certainly don't want to be there. So I I think we've, quick summary, we have high-level reasonable assumptions. We've made some adjustments to those assumptions based on positive experience over the last few years. We expect to continue to refine that because the pandemic-impacted revenues are a little bit unpredictable. And we don't know how much of that to count or not to count. And the the other really important piece is we isolated any major one-time revenue like ARPA dollars and things like that, so it's not artificially inflating the forecast. So it's good news in general.
Agree.
Right.
Yeah, I was just going to say you sort of you sort of beat me to it, Tanisha. I was going to say that this is a market improvement over the previous charts that we've dealt with in previous budget cycles that I know Councilmember Harris and I always point to and say. These don't look like they reflect real-life experience when it looks like we're going to deplete all of our money in five years. So this looks like, you know, a lot of thoughtful updating to ensure that it's sort of a more accurate reflection. And I appreciate all of Nate's disclaimers. We get that this is just a forecast and that it's sort of a moving target. But to me, it seems, based on everything that you both said, much more in line with reality than than the previous versions. Which, as I understand, are sort of, you know, driven by, you know, accounting principles and other things, you know, to make it. To to reach the result where you sort of look like you've run out of money, even though we know we're not running out of money in three to five years.
Jim.
To that point, and having not been up here previously to see that that dash line go down below zero. And knowing that we don't have a specific projects that we're looking to fund, is there a target where we feel comfortable? You know, right now, we see, you know, in FY27 that the balance would be around 50 million. Is there an area that we're shooting to kind of allow it to, you know, if if you get into the, I was not a math major, but you get into the sine curve, what's going to be the kind of that through line that we feel comfortable with?
I think they're not the sine curve.
You like that?
Yeah, so I I would say Nate threw out what our current policy is for for a reserve minimum, right? Which would be three, the three-year average.
25% of the.
It's the three-year average of expenditures. So generally, 25% of that.
So we we aren't, we aren't touching that. I would say, however, that's been a topic of discussion as well. And whether that's an appropriate reserve balance policy for us as a pay-as-you-go community. And whether holding these funds in the general fund versus a more appropriate fund makes sense. So some of that will be vetted as we get through this study that we want to undertake. So I I would say in this five-year period, we're nowhere near a danger zone. The danger zone where we certainly don't want to go below would be that 25% of the three-year average. So we're we're still good there. But the question is, does that make sense for us as a community? And a lot of the guidance that we get from, you know, the the experts, so in our case, GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. They have recommendation. There are very few communities in the U.S. that are pay-as-you-go, right? And so we have to really pull apart some of those things and figure out what works best for us, our situation. And then customize it based on what are our capital needs, the second parts of that question, what are our capital wants, right? Because we have those two.
Great, thank you.
There's also diminishing returns after a certain point of forecasting, right? You can't forecast 10, 15 years in advance. It it sort of becomes meaningless. So.
Mio.
All right. This is my least favorite graph every year.
I thought it was going to be better this year.
It's better, but it's so, look, if if we were taking bets on this, I'd bet on the over every year because we always beat these the forecasts. So just for the sake of the public and for this, any staff that might be nervous or my colleagues, we always do better than this. And some of the reasons are very conservative assumptions, right? You're not assuming good news on one-time events coming in that you don't already know about. We're projecting 3% growth in income tax revenue and 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 real estate tax revenue. And we're generally doing better than that. So so I don't have a, I mean, I don't have a problem with these numbers. I just don't believe that we're really going to be that bad. And if we go back the seven years that I've been sitting here looking at these reports, we've beaten every every graph that we've that we've shown. So it's okay. You know, it it it's kind of, we're looking at a worst case and that's okay. I just don't want the public to believe, to to be nervous that we're going to be depleting our fund balance by 20 million or some other number. I I just don't think that we're, I mean, if you want to put some money on the table, Tanisha. And it's okay. I mean, it's, when it showed going below zero, I thought it was more of an issue than it is at this point.
I, so I I agree. I do, I remember I have, we had fun with this debate last year as well. Based on the historicals that I was looking at, it didn't seem unreasonable, you know, and we, our assumptions certainly needed to be refined, and I think we all agreed on that part. But the city has used in the past relatively consistently reappropriation, so reserve money for operations, right? So the 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 point you do that, you're almost kind of locking yourself in that you're always going to need to do that, and that compounds over time. I think that we've sort of, we've walked away from from that practice. And we've made sure to align our ongoing expenses with with our ongoing revenue, which is also really helpful and sort of seen as an improvement in the graph. It looked like you wanted to add something to Nate.
I think some of the attitudes about this five-year plan were kind of born out of the Great Recession in 2008. And the experience that people have had with, you know, changes to the labor force, you know, potentially reductions in force and things like that. The city didn't come out of that completely unscathed, I think. And so having that kind of mindset of, you know, we really need to be prepared. Obviously, the one-year plan is going to be very different from what the five-year plan is because of the level of certainty. And so, you know, when we're able to look at exactly what we're, you know, our plan is for the next year and those planned expenditures versus the five-year outlook of, you know, can we really forecast this revenue? Do we know, you know, is there going to be a pandemic? Is the federal response going to be the level that it was in 2008 or the level that it was in 2020? And you can't really program that in. And so that, I think that's why the assumptions tend to be so conservative.
Better to be safe than sorry. And as I keep telling our mayor, it's good to have dry powder so that, you know, when, if bad things happen, we're in better shape than other people. We're, you know, I, it's fine. I just, again, I just, again, I would, I would put a lot of money on, we'll have more money than this at the end of five years, and that's not a bad thing. So it's okay.
Our division chiefs and our, excuse me, our department heads and our city manager are very good fiscal stewards, as well as you on the mayor and city council. So I I believe I would put, make that bet as well, Councilmember Harris.
Is anybody taking the other side of this?
All right, all right. Keep going, Tanisha. Or Nate.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. So I'm going to just do a quick bit on the Housing Improvement Fund to address Councilmember Spiegel's, hopefully address Councilmember Spiegel's question. So this slide is just going to review the the HIF in general. It was created between 2012 and 2015 by Crown Farm Property Contributions in lieu of onsite workforce dwelling units totaling $3 million. The mayor and city council prioritize the use of these funds for affordable housing opportunities throughout the city. The funds are intended to help people earning up to 100% of the area median income, or AMI, which is now approximately 130,000 per year for a four-person family. To date, the funds have been used in two ways, preservation and rehabilitation of existing multifamily rental homes. And supplement the city's loan program to help families purchase their first home or our GALP program. Staff is currently exploring a range of options to use the remaining HIF funds in an effective and efficient manner to meet the city's housing goals. So what I'll add here is we have transferred 240,000 annually to to this fund. In addition to the 3 million that started the fund, there are also loan proceeds, well, not loan proceeds, loan repayment dollars that come into the fund every year as people repay their loans to us. We've budgeted this year 600,000 for developer support and I think 1.5 million for multifamily housing support for rehab and and improvement of of those units or those types of units. And so the staff, which I will take this opportunity to introduce, everyone kept calling Louise. David Chrisdeal is here. David is our new program manager in the Housing and Community Development Department. Hi, David. And he and Tom and Sharon are taking a look at how do we, you know, best leverage the dollars in this fund to meet the city's goals. He and Tom are here. If you have more specific questions or if I did not address at all what you were going for, Councilmembers Spiegel.
I think Councilmember Henderson had some questions, so I'll defer.
I have a question. And it's a probably a newbie question. With with the requirement of new development of 15% MDPUs, can this funding be used to increase that to 18 or 20%? Or 100?
Can you answer that? David's also like two days on the job. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. I guess, I guess the short answer is it could be, but I think there's other ways to do it. And I think what we, the thinking that we've been having, and and some of this is the way these funds were spent before, was that these were loans to a nonprofit developer who purchased a property, I think it's on Frederick Street, North Frederick Street. And that's that's sort of one way of doing it. I guess it's possible to also use a financial incentive, like a loan program to supplement through the inclusionary zoning, the the MPDU program. So there's lots of ways to do it. I think part of our work is, you know, you've got a, there's a lot of money that's that's been sitting there for a while, and we've got to figure out a way to get it. And it involves leverage, it involves marketing. This is a great place to live. I come from a high-cost community in Arlington. And so we had a a lot of developers, both both not-for-profit developers and for-profit developers that were pretty skilled in using a trust fund and tax credits, tax incentives and the whole sort of the capital stack. To to either purchase existing buildings and homes and renovate them or to create new housing. So that's kind of what our work is to do, is to try and figure out what the options are. I know one of the callers really earlier talked about this housing study that the planning staff is leading, and I think that's going to help us figure out, you know, where the need is. Is it in that that kind of MPDU workforce development area or is it, is it a lower income range or or something else? And so that's, we're kind of looking forward to getting that housing study kind of going, and I think that'll help us, you know, fine-tune, you know, sort of what what the options might be. And then, and how do we get the funds out to those to to support those options?
Thank you. I'm I'm excited and happy you're here and and about this program and and what we're going to see as a result of this study. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I I had a question for, I guess, Tanisha on this. First of all, what, I I know it's in here somewhere, but just quickly, what's the, what's the current balance on this fund? And while you're looking that up, I guess the next question is going to be, what other revenue sources to grow this fund do we have aside from the annual transfer? And the repayment of loans that we make? I mean, the Crown Farm Property Contributions were kind of a big one-time thing. Do we anticipate occasional situations where we might have other large contributions as one-offs going forward? Or is that not really something we're looking at anymore?
I I could, I could definitely be misspeaking here, but I thought there was a policy decision to not accept those payments going forward, that that was a one-time deal. Am I, am I mixing that up?
I mean, I'm remembering that, and I could be wrong too, but I'm remembering that we had, you know, we struggled with the ability to to make it possible to have MPDU's in, you know, condo development, in certain condo development. So if there were another large condo development that was proposed and we we couldn't make that happen, and maybe, I don't know.
I think Crown was a special case because it came in under an annexation agreement that was under the auspices of the county's program, which had the buyout. Our our program doesn't have that option.
Right.
I think there was consternation with basically being forced into the buyout because of the economic situation surrounding those condos. And the the policy decision was, let's try to avoid that in the future.
Right. So we haven't come across, I guess, yet a situation where another condo development is being built, but it's not part of an annexation, it's part of our own program. And somebody tries to come to us and say, we can't make MPDU's work. We haven't dealt with that, and our and our existing program wouldn't necessarily allow for that, right?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding. I I I don't think it, there have been no shortage of people claiming that they can't make it work.
Right. That's not what I'm talking about, but yes.
I think we send them back to the to the table with that. The currents?
So at the end of FY21, we had eight and a half million dollars approximately in that fund. On on this particular fund, it is slightly confusing as the expenses there generally become assets within the fund. Since it's a loan program rather than a a real expense. And so, you know, reviewing that fund sheet can get a little confusing, and that those assets tend to stay on the books and don't necessarily deplete the balance.
Outside of the CDVG, because there is some CDVG support included in that fund, there's no other revenue source for it.
Thank you.
All right. So I think Dennis is up. Nate and I are going to take our seats and turn over the hot seat here to Dennis. Thank you. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation.
I warmed it up for you.
Yeah, I keep looking back at that clock. The clock is wrong, but I think it's before 10 o'clock, so I consider myself lucky, given past years. Just to refresh everybody's kind of mind where we're at, we're on page 42 of the packet. I will let you know that the Stormwater Budget Fund information, because there's a lot of, both for the Stormwater Fund and the Capital Improvement Program. The Stormwater Budget information can be paid, found on pages 517 through 535 in the packet materials. And then there's also. And then there's also an appendix which deals with the specific projects. That's on pages 675 and through 709 of the packet. One of the reasons we talk about the Stormwater Fund first is because we've just talked about the Public Works Department. The Stormwater Program is actually similar to an enterprise fund. It's not quite an enterprise fund, but we try to operate it that way. So when Tanisha went over the expenditures and the FTEs for the Public Works Department, we do not include the Stormwater Program. So the Stormwater Program tries to fund roughly 100% of the program itself, and that would include the FTEs. I will note, currently, the program has six employees. We will be adding one new FTE in FY '23, and that will be the new project manager position. To kind of refresh everybody's memory, the way we pay for the expenditures related to the Stormwater Program is, there's a collection of a Stormwater Fee that's calculated on impervious coverage for each property within Gaithersburg, and that is applied to all properties within Gaithersburg. Both nonprofit and governmental entities also pay that fee. The fee is calculated based upon a billing unit, which is roughly 500, which is 500 square feet of impervious coverage. As you well know, we just completed a rate model study to project out what we would need in terms of funding for the next seven to 10 years. With that, we were able to determine that the fee for FY '23 was $32.28 per billable unit. That's actually been fairly stable over the last few years. We haven't increased that. To give you an idea of what that costs an individual residential property owner, roughly you have about three billing units per residential property, and that varies depending on how big your house is and how much impervious surface, how many driveway spaces you have. If you do that billable unit rate calculation, they're still paying just under $100, which is about $96.84. Even with keeping the fee fairly stable, as we were presenting earlier in the year, we were able to actually expand the services under the Stormwater Program. We will be incorporating structural maintenance for the HOA facilities. That will be a new program that will, we will be starting in FY '23. One of the things that's hard to explain on this chart, and not really hard to explain, but you're kind of questioning how there can be a 63% change, decrease in this fund. As Tanisha noted earlier, this really is a result of transferring out funds to both the operating fund and the Capital Improvement Program in FY '22. There is a significant transfer of about $7 million. These funds were kind of used as starter funds or seed money when we began the program in 2016. The current budget for the Stormwater Fund is $5.1 million, and that's made up of two components, $2.93 million in operating and then $2.1 in capital improvements. I did want to share just kind of one highlight, we'll talk about some others as we go through the slides. We are allocating a percentage of the fee that we use for the billing in terms of the tax billing that the county does for us to the Stormwater Fund related to the line item for Stormwater. So that was one of the significant changes that you'll see listed in the budget book. Kind of wanted to go through some of the projects that we have been looking at throughout the Stormwater Fund history dating back to 2016. As you're aware, the Stormwater Fund helps to administer the MS4 permit, which is the Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer System Permit, so I can explain the acronym. That does include restoration projects required under the Environmental Protection Agency Chesapeake Bay mandates, which, under that program, we are required to treat a certain amount of impervious surface in our permit period. We are currently about to end that permit period, which is in FY '23. So we will have a renewal of a permit. We're not sure if it's actually going to occur in FY '23. Similar to, I've been before, many of you before, at least half of you, explaining why it took seven years to get a five-year permit approved. MDE isn't always quick on that, so it may not come about in FY '23. It might come later on. But I wanted to kind of point out, one of the projects that we did is the early projects, which is the West Deer Park Stream Improvements. You can see a before picture. We've actually just achieved the five-year mark, and that's kind of the, the milestone that we look at for stream restoration projects to see if they're successful. So you can see a before and after picture here. We believe it's been a very successful stream restoration, is what we often would call it. I kind of include additional things, because when we say restoration, most people think you're trying to revert it back to the way it was, what they visualize it. It's really reconnection to the floodplain in a lot of places, places to allow water to expand more than outside of the stream bed. So we've tried to use new terminology to talk about the improvements that are there. We've also just recently completed this project on Solitaire Court, and it was stream improvements. You can see the erosion in the before picture. This is just prior to planning, so this was just taken a few weeks ago. So the in-stream work has been completed, and then we will be doing the planting for this. This is one of the stream projects just completed this year. I will note that, if you remember, we actually did some other stream restoration projects in previous years over by Blum Park, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Prior to us creating the Stormwater Fund, one of the key aspects with the fund is to look at ways to improve the stormwater system, right? So we've done a nu, a number of drainage studies. Those were typically in areas that were developed in the 70s and 80s. We're currently going to be proposing a new study that will be coming for you for approval, actually next month, in terms of the consultant, which is really at the heart of Gaithersburg, which is some of our more impervious areas within the city. It is basically 740 acres that we'll be studying, and we'll be looking at, a detailed look at the existing infrastructure. We'll be verifying a lot of things. You can tell that, you know, Gaithersburg was built over a number of years. And so some of the information we have may not be exactly accurate on what's conveying the stormwater, because we don't have detailed plans. And so part of this study is to go about doing that. With that, it will provide direction on the types of conveyance and management improvements that we would be doing in addition to repairs. We've added three new stormwater projects in the plan. One of those projects serves as a placeholder for the previous project I discussed, and those are showing up in the 23 through 27-year expenditures. The other two projects, one is a new stream improvement project, which is Chester Town and Midtown Pond retrofit. This project would occur between FY '23 and '25 and would be approximately $1.2 million. We will get additional credit for these projects in terms of the Chesapeake Bay retrofits that I talked about earlier in the process. And then, as I noted before, last year we did complete some improvements to the stream related to Blum Park. Those were Watkins Mill and Travis projects listed in the CIP that are currently under kind of watch in terms of that five-year period that we look towards stream restoration projects. This is at the very beginning of that stream restoration project. Over the years, about 1,500 cubic yards of sediment have accumulated in this pond, and we will be doing a dredging of the pond. And it's roughly about 85,000, and will be done in FY '23, '24. And with that, I'll take a quick break to see if anybody has any questions about the Stormwater Program.
Questions? Not seeing any. Go right ahead.
The Capital Improvement Plan, which is on page 49 of the packet, you can see that the Capital Improvement Plan, we divide kind of projects into six categories. General capital, this tends to be where we use projects that are new projects, like 16 South Summit. Some of the bicycle projects are also included in there originally, and then we move them to, later on, to other facilities like infrastructure, facilities, parks, technology, and art in public places. I will note, if you wanted to dive deeper into the budget, you can find those projects on pages 495 and 515 of the packet materials. And then there is also a CIP index, which gives you a more detailed explanation of each of the projects. Those are on pages 553 through 673 of the packet. As you can see, we have some highlights related to the CIP project, and I'll go through some of those as I go on to other slides. One of the big highlights I wanted to talk about is the city staff has developed a CIP evaluation process, which is a little bit more structured than we have had in the past. It's, includes a committee at the city level that includes representation from public works, finance, CMO office, economic development, and also parks, recreation, and culture. We actually use a scoring criteria, and I won't go into detail unless someone wants to talk about it. And then each of the new projects is evaluated based on that scoring criteria to determine whether it should proceed in the process. And we do look at a number of different issues related to, you know, does it address mandates that are already required of the city? How does it impact operational finances and revenue generation? Equity impacts? Those are some of the things that we look at in the scoring. So this year, the projects that were submitted by the departments were scored and then ranked, and then we chose among those which to proceed forward. One of the other highlights I want to point out that was off, referred to earlier, is we actually consolidated three projects, which were the street maintenance projects. So you'll see in significant changes, like an $11 million adjustment. That's really a wash, because three of those projects rolled up into Project 181. So it's showing up as a, as a significant change, but in reality, we're not adding $11 million to the projects. To kind of highlight some of the projects that were completed in FY '22, Robertson Park Synthetic Field. We also finished the improvements on the Town Plaza Water Park Facility. We are also conducting kind of a long, multi-year project to re-retrofit all the lights and upgrade the lights that we have at a number of intersections, that we actually own the lights, the county owns, traffic lights for some of our facilities in the city. Summit was the last one that we did last year. It's the second one of the projects that we have completed. I believe we have five more years of projects to complete the rest of, the signals with that. We also completed, and I don't have a picture of this, Phase 1 of the LED light conversion for the light, streetlights that are owned by the city. Also note, as you walk out the building today, we are also improving parking lot lighting under the same premise. So if you haven't noticed, probably in the last two, three months, we have changed all the city hall parking lots to LED too. So you might want to take a look at that when you leave. And then one of the biggest projects that we have that's nearing completion is 16 South Summit Avenue, and we're hoping to have that finished this fiscal year. The next series of slides, we talked a little bit about last year again, as Tanisha noted, we're trying to look at what are the long-range costs that we have deferred related to the properties that we own, but also looking at when we do new projects, what's the lifecycle cost? So we're, we're sure about what it's costing us to open a new park. You know, we've opened in, in my career here, we're going on the third new park that we are opening, and then we have another park coming up fairly soon. So these slides show the expenditures related to new construction and enhancement versus repair and restoration. You can see in '22, it's still pretty much new construction. Most of that is really the police station. FY '23, you're starting to get a little bit more balance, but we also have the new construction related to Pleasantview Park. In '24, it really starts to balance out. We are still having some big projects in '25 that are new projects. Some of those include bringing the Crown Park online, Crown Farm Park online, and then several bicycle projects, east side of NIST, the I-370 connection, and Lakeland's Washingtonian And then it really starts to flip a little bit. Part of that's on, on purpose, because we have been looking at trying to make sure that we have sufficient funding in out-years to do maintenance projects, which we believe we have discovered related to the facility need studies, but also we just know that we've done some deferred maintenance. One of the ones that's kind of glaring is, do we really think in 2027, we're going to be 100% related to repair and restoration? We don't think so. We, we have just kind of held back until that study is done. We will, I'll talk a little bit later about one of the projects that might be new enhancements to one of the parks in those future years. So the new projects that we approved for FY '23, and actually, all of these are in FY '23. You know, a lot of times, we approve new projects that are in out-years, but these projects all occur in FY '23. Two of them are classified as kind of, you know, repair or existing projects, right? So Winter Walk and Church Street, this project is, we're adjusting the alley, curb, and gutter. We've seen a lot of damage related to trash and recycling trucks in this area, and believe it's in our best interest just to modify it, rather than trying to get the drivers to actually stay in the curb lane. This project, again, will occur in '23 and is roughly 60,000. The other one that's kind of repair and maintenance is the Casey Dance Studio Floor Replacement. This project would allow us to replace the flooring with more of a spring floor system. It has been a while since this was done. I believe it dates back to the renovation when Casey was done, and I wasn't here at that time, so I don't know the exact date off the top of my head. This really is only the da, the one dance floor facility that we have within our system, so we think it's important that we make those changes or repairs to that. Then we have three new projects. One is the Morris Park Futsal Court. We've been seeing this as a trend within the recreation, not only for our community, but also other communities in the area. We did convert in, back in 2016, an existing tennis court to a futsal court, and we've had really good success with that. This would allow us to schedule a little bit more, because we would have two courts, more leagues and tournament and clinics. This will be a lighted field, and it would be approximately 300,000 in expenditure. Kelly Turf Lights is also a new project. This is currently related to the construction of the new turf field as part of the Elementary School Number 8. We would actually be lighting this facility. It would allow us to increase the time that we would be able to use the facility. As you know, a lot of the time that we would get with this facility is after 3:00 PM, and during certain parts of the year, the only way we're going to be able to use it to a great extent would be to light it. We also think this is important to allow us to increase the sports in the surrounding area to include students of the Forest Oak Middle School. It will increase rentals that we'll have available, and the FY '23 expenditure cost is 350,000. As I alluded before, one of the projects that we're doing in FY '23 will probably propose new enhancement projects, and this is the Robertson Park redesign. This is really an evaluation of what's currently... This is really an evaluation of what's currently on Robertson Park, how we might use it more effectively, and we'll set up large-scale projects for future years' funding. This only includes the cost to actually do the study, and does not include any cost in terms of improvements, and that's 50,000. With that, I always try to end, because, you know, there are lots of people who are involved in all these projects, both in the stormwater side and the CIP side. These are the individuals from the Engineering Services and Facilities.
Dennis, before you get to that, because that seems kind of like a wrap-up, what's the status on the pedestrian bridge over Great Seneca?
Still moving forward. It did have some delay based upon staffing changes, but we're still on target to try to complete that within the next two years. It's currently in the design stage, and we'll be bringing it back to you, I believe, when we're at the 10, 30%?
You're close to 30%.
30% design phase.
Great. Thanks, I interrupted you. Please, go ahead.
No, I actually wanted to go back to, because Neil asked a question about, you know, kind of where is this money going for FY '23? The slide that we showed you, taking out the transfers, is roughly 14 million is being spent in FY '23. Just to put it in perspective, 15 projects have 2.3 million, and there's a total of 40 projects in FY '23. So we do have quite a bit of expenditures. I can go through those if you want me to list those by name. Again, we have some big-ticket items, Pleasant View Park, but also every year, you know, we spend roughly 2.1 million just on street repair. So it does add up to 14 million?
It's bigger than usual this year.
It is bigger, because we have some bigger projects, like the park project is one of the other ones. Also, part of the pedestrian bridge construction is also shown. Not all of it, but some of it's shown in FY '23. So we do have some larger projects there. Again, just to kind of close on the CIP, these are the people that make the CIP possible in terms of the project, engineers and project managers, both for Engineering Services and Facilities, operations, because they do a number of the projects, like Kevin Edgers did, the Robertson Field, and then Stormwater does all the stormwater projects, and here are the individuals that are responsible for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the CIP, if you have any.
Rob? I have two questions and two asks, if I could. Question number one is, the line item that's talking about park trail markers, sorry, the line item that's talking about park trail markers, is that the wayfinding signage I've been asking for year after year for the past few years, or am I going to still keep that?
No, that's it, and it's really under the Arts in Public Places, because they're trying to integrate art within those trail markers.
Awesome, thank you. Second question, do you have a status on the city accessing the transportation infrastructure funds that the county is holding for us?
I wish I had better. Update, we have actually asked the county, for those of you who weren't on the council before, this has been a long-running issue with us. We do have a memorandum of understanding with the county. The county recently tried, or is asking Rockville and Gaithersburg to have the same MOU agreement, or memorandum of understanding. We have not made progress with Rockville in sufficient time, so we have asked to have our own MOU and move forth that process. The county's evaluating that. That is my hope.
Didn't they spend all their money a long time ago?
Rockville? Rockville has spent a large portion of their funding already, but we have not spent a large portion of our funding. So I'm hopeful that the county will agree, and we can move forward with our own separate agreement. They still might parallel in a lot of ways, but Rockville and Gaithersburg have different needs, and so it's been difficult to try to come to terms with just one base agreement. So that's kind of what I could say to that at this point.
We are different municipalities. Two asks, if I could. So one, I've had an ongoing conversation with Dennis for years about utilization of Hawklights in the city, and they're, historically, it has not been something that has been permissible, I think is, based on our conversation, but there was a recent change due to Vision Zero at the county level, that now they're recommending Hawklights within their infrastructure, and therefore, it's more palatable for here in the city. I would love to see the use of Hawklights in particular areas of the city. Two that I've been talking to Dennis about a lot has been on Kentland Boulevard, at the entry points to the, what do they call them? Roundabouts?
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts, and then, and I'm sure there's other places in the city as well, but these are the ones that come to mind. And the other is the crossing on Long Draft, where the county has actually added some control signage there, but there's still, it's not a controlled intersection. And then, maybe, as you know, thinking about it, in Old Town here, where we, do we still have those flags that people carry across the streets?
No, we don't have those anymore. We actually have something just a little bit less than a Hawklight, because it doesn't turn, it just flashes that a pedestrian will be crossing, so it doesn't have a signal that turns red. It actually just has little flashers. They've been, they were used prior to Hawklights.
Okay, I mean, so the ask would be, and I'm not sure if it's this budget or future budgets, or if we could utilize the transportation funding that the county's holding for us, for those types of improvements. So that would be an ask for an evaluation for perhaps this budget or future budgets. And I just threw out those as priorities that I personally have seen the necessity for. The other ask is, so I was approached by a council member on the Town Council of Washington Grove, and one of the pipe dreams that we've had is a bicycle infrastructure from Old Town, Gaithersburg, down to Shady Grove Road. And one of the impediments has always been Washington Grove, and it's no longer the impediment, because Washington Grove has successfully worked with the county to plan out a bike path from Shady Grove Metro Station up to our border. And so it's kind of something for us, I think, that if that's something we want to prioritize, and I think we should prioritize, we should, we should fund it, and we should, probably in, my ask right now is coordination with Washington Grove, Town Council, and the county to figure out what status they have with respect to that, and then marry up our planning, design, and funding with whatever they're going to do, because, and I know Jim is probably the big biker now, I know me and Neil used to compete on it, but I would love to take a bike ride with Councilmember McNulty from Old Town down to Shady Grove Road on, or Shady Grove Metro Station, on a low-stress bike path that goes through Bucolic, Washington Grove.
So I believe that project is actually moving forward. Came up at a recent Transportation Committee meeting. Rob Robinson is having good discussions with the county in Washington Grove, so.
Yeah, I can provide a little bit of update, Rob, on both your requests. You know, we didn't technically adopt Vision Zero wholeheartedly. We adopted the principles. One of the things that are on my plate, Tony Berger's plate, and then Brian Field's plate, is to develop a safety plan based upon those principles, and so we will look at Hawklights as part of that. I will tell you that, under the current county regulations, Hawklights would not be eligible for MOU or transportation development tax funding. So because they're not capacity-related, we have had discussions with the county about trying to expand that, and I think they are looking at expanding the use of those funds for Vision Zero-type activities, or safety activities. But currently, the county ordinance provisions would not allow that. So I just want to set the expectation that even though if we do those, we currently couldn't add those to some projects that we would like to see funded under our MOU. Secondly, as Neil pointed out, we actually did submit a, what's called a TLC grant, which is a transportation land use connection grant with COG. We will know probably at the end of this week or early next week, if we receive it, related to getting funding to study that connection between the community and get down to Shady Grove. I will tell you, this was in the CIP a number of years ago. The concept was to try to go down Old Town, and that's probably not going to happen. We would look at some connection that uses Teachers Way and Gerard, as far as making that connection. But if we get that grant, we'll be further along to try and include that in the CIP program, probably in FY '24, when we come back to you, giving at least some dollar amount, should the council want to add that. We would still have to look for funding for that. That would be something that would be eligible under the MOU.
Jim?
Councilmember, where I look forward to that bike ride, that stretch of my ride from Washington Grove through Old Town is probably the most dangerous part of my ride, and I'm on, you know, Muddy Branch and Great Seneca and Quince Orchard, and all of those have at least separated bike lanes, so that is definitely a challenge there. Councilmember, who also brought up the flags that used to be there, and that wasn't even the intersection where the light is closer to the mark tracks, that was actually at the intersection with Old Town, where the, at, just at the, at that intersection. And Dennis and I had a conversation about just the challenges of those intersections in Old Town just a couple of weeks ago. It's an issue that I brought up with Ali Mumpower years ago, when I was on the Old Town Advisory Committee, and just, you know, wondering if there is a way through, you know, best practices with traffic lights to control both of those intersections with Gerard and Summit, not Gerard and Summit, sorry, with East Diamond and Summit, and Old Town and Summit, and have that as one cohesive, computerized intersection. As somebody who drives that multiple times a day, and seeing how our traffic patterns have evolved, people cutting through Old Town with the advent of Waze and all of those things, it's a challenge. And obviously, the train tracks have been one of the biggest concerns, and not wanting traffic to back up across the tracks. But I can't imagine that this is the only place in America where there is another intersection near a train track, so I would hope that there would be some kind of best practices. I know there are jurisdictional questions as far as the traffic lights, and who runs that, and where that money would come from, but I know, in talking to folks from Old Town, that improving that would be a priority for a lot of the residents there. So since we're discussing Hawklights, since we're discussing public works budget, not sure how and when we could get that into the budget, if we need, Tony, another, a study of some fashion, you know, I think that would be something that is probably long overdue, to look at those intersections and see what we could do there.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any? Is that all you got, Dennis?
That's all I got, unless you want me to do next step.
I can cover the next step slide. Thank you, Dennis. If we can bring up packet page 60. So just as a reminder, public comment is invited and encouraged. Our record is open until April 27, and you can email us, you can call us, or you can mail in your comments. Budget adoption is scheduled for Monday, May 16, and as I've mentioned, we expect there to be nothing substantive, but some changes along the way that we will certainly point out when we present the adopted budget to you on May 16. And I'd also like to thank everyone, all of the staff, especially Nathan Bassett, for helping to pull this budget together, Acting Director Janice Hartman, and all of the SLT and Division Heads, who've worked really hard over the course of months to get us to this point. I get to just put the charts together and say all the really boring stuff. It's not boring to me, but I get to present it, but it's certainly a culmination of a lot of hard work from a lot of staff, and I just want to make sure they understand it. I appreciate all their efforts, so thank you.
Thank you, and we echo that to all the staff involved in putting together this budget, and everyone who's stayed, remained with us this evening for this long meeting. Tanisha, I want to give you a lot of credit for, you excel at these types of presentations. Your passion and interest in the subject comes through and makes it more enjoyable for all of us and edifying for the public, so well done. And, you know, it is, this is one of the more important things that we do, so thank you for, thank everybody for helping make it easy. I'll put it in air quotes, it's not fully easy, but it's easier than it could, than it could be. In any event, our next regular meeting of Mayor Council is next Monday, April 4. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.